Exactly. Good evening, it's six thirty, and call the order. Meeting number eighteen forty-two of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a call, and we have four regular members, one alternate. So Frank, I would ask you to sit in on any voting or discussions this evening?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, for added agenda items, we have two applications that we're going to receive under the receipt of application portion. Legal notice, there was a legal notice. East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing on Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. Details regarding how to attend will be published. On the commission's agenda will be made available on the town's website, P Z twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. A special use permit, the applicant is Kimberly Lance. Doodle Acres, which is open to doggy daycare and dog grooming service at fifteen Price Road. Map one thirty-six, block seventy-five, lot zero zero one dash zero one, zone A one. Full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage. Of the town's website, all interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This appeared in Journal Inquirer on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, and January second, twenty twenty-three. Public participation, this is the portion of the meeting for someone to bring up any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone in the audience would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Yes, ma'am.
I just happened to find Nancy Masters, Ry Street. I happened to find an article in the Historical Society dated July twenty-three, nineteen ninety-three. And it happens to list Ian Golden as being on this committee. Thank you for your years of service, thanks, just crazy. I was among from then till now, there were many years. You know, it was on something entirely different, I was gonna throw the paper away. And I was going down, I went, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, here we go, we'll continue. Proval of minutes. Regular meeting eighteen forty-one held on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Does anyone have any suggestions, corrections, alterations? The man pegged for an awful lot of typing that she had to do to put all these minutes together. Okay, we have no changes, I've entertained a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen forty-one held December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two as presented.
The motion on the table to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Receipt of applications, so there were two that came in. First one was P Z twenty twenty-three dash zero one, it's for especially used permit. Site plan modification for one twenty-four Newbury Road. The applicant is code of construction. And the other application that came in is P Z twenty twenty-three dash zero two for one eighteen Prospect Hill Road, special use permit with site plan review for a trucking terminal. The applicant is Carl Crane. Those will be heard at a later meeting. Performance bonds, actions permits, extensions, road acceptance, we have nothing. Continued public hearing. Easy twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, one fifteen Scandic Road. Special use permit for event hosting, the applicant is East Windsor Historical Society. Okay, assume you're here to speak on their behalf.
Can we make, for the record, Jager, three J R Russo Associates here representing East Windsor Historical Society with regard to this application. With me this evening is our attorney Carly Adalina, I believe in the audience here somewhere, I think you made it. Scott Heskett, our traffic engineer is also here. Tim Kuhn, my partner is also here, Lori DiMatista, our architect and engineer is is also here, as well as some members of the Historical Society Board of Directors. So I think what I'd like to do this evening is there was some questions, concerns brought up by the commission, which I believe we have addressed. And we have submitted to you some revised plans and some information, I thought I would go through that and try to make it as brief as I can, because I know we're, we've been here a long time with this and it's been kind of dragging. And then there were some other concerns and questions that were brought up by neighbors that I thought I would try to walk through and maybe address some of those concerns as well, so. Starting with plan revisions, you do have a revised set of plans that are there that you have in front of you this evening. And submitted along with that was an email to town planner, Ruth Van Calvert, which maybe you have, I'm not sure if she bore this along with you, but it basically describes all of the plan changes, what sheets they incur on. And I'm just gonna walk through that with you, so. Cover sheet, sheet one is just revision dates based on the typical plan number that it may have been on. There's a revision to the layout plan and landscape plan, sheet four. We added the V two bulk table requirements, and I think it was the chair that that brought that up at the last meeting as to having to meet the bulk table requirements of the V two zone, so we added that. And gave you that information, and I can tell you that the property conforms or exceeds all of the requirements in the V two bulk table requirements in the data block. Also on sheet four, we added two E B charging stations, which are located up close to the building, as close as you can get them anyway, in the parking area. On the landscape plan, there's some revisions to the buffers to include six-foot evergreens at time, which is called out in your landscape buffer requirements, so six feet minimum size at time planting. Included solid fencing and staggered rows of evergreen, so that revision was made, those notes are made to the plan. Along the easterly side, the buffer that's shown along the east side of Jason's new Schultz property. On sheet six, on the stormwater plan, I had a conversation with staff. I guess it was shortly after the meeting with regard to comments that were made by neighbors, attorney Needleman and others with regard to the stormwater plan, how it's insufficient, we're gonna dilute the Scandic River, so on and so forth. You do have obviously an approval letter in your memo and in your packets from the town engineer who has reviewed the plan and it's in conformance with the requirements. All of that said, taking a belt and suspenders approach, we added to it a, on the last drainage structure prior to outletting into the basin, a deep sum and oil snout hood on that last structure, and that shows up on sheet six. Sheet seven, the utility plan again shows the two charging stations and the generator pad. And a call out for the mechanical room, and there'll be adjacent buildings which will house the fire suppression system and water storage tank. So that is also shown, there was some discussion. I think, again, I don't know if it was by a commission member or somebody in the audience about the fire suppression system and their interest in how it was maybe put together, so. Just as a note, we are required to have a fire suppression system, and there will be one with this building should be built. However, that said, it will be designed by a professional engineer, obviously, who who specializes in this type of work, and it will be reviewed and permitted through the building department and the fire marshal's office, it's not necessarily something that falls under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I know you know that because you've done these things before, but just so those in the public realize that, you know, we're not trying to pull a fast one, we don't want to show you, it's the reality is, it's something that comes with the actual building plan that's permitted through fire marshal's office and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we did show the location of where we'll be located in the building, as well as the generator that will allow it to function should there be a power outage. And in sheet twelve, the detail sheet, we've added a detail for the snout hood and the oil trap. So those are essentially the revisions, which I would call basically minor in terms of what we've given you, but they are on the plans, and the plans that have been submitted, and you have those. So in terms of commission member questions from the last meeting, now I went through those, and some of these may be redundant, but just so I'm sure I addressed everything, we did add the two E B chargers, they show up on sheet four and sheet seven. In terms of possible uses for the facility, and I think there's been some confusion as to what's going to be used in the building and what's not in the building. With over two hundred and fifty people, and we talked about larger public events, maybe they're permitted under your temporary permit section in four oh five of your regulations. So we submitted, which I think you have in your packets, essentially more or less a revised list of possible events. Noting that some of these larger events of over two hundred and fifty people would be something that would be permitted separately under the section four oh five of the regulations, and not necessarily as part of this approval for the use of the building. And I think Ruth actually mentioned that in her memo to you as well. That there's larger public events versus the smaller private events that would be within the building and have two hundred and fifty people or less. Also in the notations on this, if you look at the bottom, you will see, getting some note about the temporary seasonal events in section four oh five. Fire occupancy list limited to two hundred and fifty total guests and staff. Hours of operation Monday through Sunday into nine with all music off at eight thirty P M. Amplified music indoors only. Lori DiMatista's gonna talk to you a little bit more about that later on. And any sound levels at the property line will have to adhere to the state standards, which we talked a little bit about at the last meeting. So if you have this, if there are any questions on it, certainly we could, we could discuss that later on as we move forward. So. So the use types, again, was one of the questions that came up, as well as noise, noise levels, we talked about that a little bit. Meeting state standards, I will also tell you that if this is approved and we move forward with construction, we will be doing testing with regard to noise levels, staff will be invited to come along and witness the testing so that we're all comfortable and sure that whatever music is going on within the building meets the standards of the property line, so there's no issue with that. Uh, V two bulk requirements, we talked about showing on the plan, we meet all those requirements, actually exceed them all. And I think that covers questions from the commission. In terms of general comments from the public, there were a number of them that came up, and I'm not gonna address every one of them. Some of the ones that I felt were pertinent, I think I did want to go over, so. With regard to traffic, obviously, there was a lot of discussion about traffic back and forth with us and Scott Heskett telling you what he's done in his report, with eternal Needleman and his team talking about the traffic and how they still think there's issues with the traffic in the neighbors as well. So we have a revised traffic report, you've seen it, it's been submitted, it's been reviewed by the traffic authority, you have a letter from the traffic authority indicating they concur with the report. You also have a letter from the town engineer concurring to think. They also concur with Scott's report. Which also includes the sightline plan, which you also have seen that there are sufficient sightlines for the turning movements in and out of the driveway. The fire department, again, a lot of comments about can the site accommodate emergency vehicles and fire trucks? So we actually put together a turning movement plan. For that, we use the largest apparatus, the warehouse point pass, which is a ladder truck, ninety-five feet, I believe. We got the specifications from that, we ran it through the site. Made some modifications where they needed to be to show that it can get through the site without hitting any more cars. And they get through from Cemetery Road all the way back out to again, out to Scandic Road. This as well, it's been reviewed by the fire marshal, and I think you probably have an email memo in your packets indicating that he's comfortable with the information as submitted. In terms of the drainage design, there's been a lot of talk about the drainage, how the drainage report's not right, the drainage isn't gonna function, and so on and so forth. We've gone through that, Tim Kuhn was here and talked to you a little bit at the last meeting about the drainage. We also talked to your town engineer Lynn Norton again, explained Mr. Needleman's concern about the drainage, and Tim went through it with Lynn, and I think again, you have a memo in your packets indicating that he concurs with our drainage report. And that the drainage will function and meets the design standards that are required. And again, I talked a little bit about the additional the additions of the deep sum from the last structure and the snout hood that was also added to the last structure. The other thing that's been mentioned continually right through the entire process here is, is the fact that the neighbors, you know, and the attorneys for the neighbors keep talking about how we're destroying and not preserving farmland. So with that said, I'm gonna pass out to you a copy of the twenty sixteen aerial photo that's available on the town website. And if you take a look at that photo, what you're gonna see is our site, and I've labeled the event building, if you will, as you're looking at it. And when you look around, what you're gonna see is a whole lot of equipment. Store trucks, trailers, piles of trash. Is what it appears to be. Construction equipment, stuff that looks like it doesn't run, it's just sitting there, basically a a bit of a mess. And if you look at the area to the east or to the right on the plan, adjacent to the buildings, you're gonna see a whole area that's all disturbed and piled up with what appears to be a bunch of junk. And certainly not farmland, and that's where our parking lot is going, so I don't know how, quite how we're we're talking about how we're destroying farmland, when the reality is, is that what what the Historical Society has done since they took possession of the property about a year and a half after that picture is spent tens of thousands of dollars cleaning up a big mess. And they have improved the property tremendously since they have owned it. And I would say, and we're gonna talk a little bit later on about property values, I would say that they probably have increased the neighborhood property values based on the work in the dollars that they have spent on this property since they took ownership in twenty eighteen. And I think that picture is pretty much pretty similar, that's, it's, it was a mess. And it no longer is, and if this is approved, it's almost gonna get better. So that's a little bit about farm, and the protection of farm, and then we believe, obviously, we meet all the requirements in the special permit, terms of preserving the farmland and so forth. Sightwriting was another issue that I think was mentioned by one of the neighbors. I think they said that, you know, lights are gonna be on to midnight, we've got thirty and forty-foot high poles. And so forth, so just to clarify, at the last meeting, we gave you cut sheets, we told you what types of lights we're using. The pole heights are twelve feet and eighteen feet, there's no thirty-foot poles, no forty-foot poles. The parking lot lights, the areas to the east of all the buildings where we have parking lot lighting are on eighteen-foot poles. Those poles are gonna be blocked by the building, the people who live off to the west aren't even gonna be able to see those poles, because the building is in delay. Parking area is smaller. The lights around the building are a traditional room and air. They're on twelve-foot poles. And these are a colonial pipe network, that's what's used around the building. The driveways and in the handicap spots are close to the building. If the building isn't open and there's no functions, obviously the lights are not gonna be on, so I just wanted to make that clear, because there was a lot of discussion and so forth from the neighbors about that. Someone else, I think, brought up geothermal, because there was some talk about geothermal being used here, maybe. And how we could possibly affect the wells in here. And they may, they may use geothermal, we don't know that yet. But if they did, it would be a closed system, so it's not like we're pumping water out of the ground continuously, that's not how this would work, it would be a closed loop system. We've run underground, they would use the ambient temperature of the earth to heat and to cool. But again, this is something that's gonna come later, if it's gets to the point where we're gonna build this. The geothermal would be designed again by another type of an engineer. And it's gonna be reviewed by the building department and the health department, because it will require a separate well. So that's another permitting process, again, not necessarily under the purview of P C C, and I know you know that, but I'm just pointing it out so that the neighbors and the folks of the audience understand that. So there would be no, obviously, effect with a closed system on any of the wells. And it does go through another permanent review process, and will be designed by a licensed professional. The other thing that was mentioned numerous times is the fact that our plan shows laterals for the source system, and it does, and I heard a lot of talk about, well, they're gonna expand, and they're not telling us what they're doing, and they're gonna do this, and it's gonna continue to grow. I can tell you, that's not the fact, there are no plans to expand anything. The reason they're there is, when we put in a sewer main, just like when the town puts some sewer main in a town road, or the state puts in a sewer main, when you're putting it in, the cost to put a lateral in is small compared to having to go back later and dig it up, so we've got other buildings there that have no sanitary facilities, and maybe they never will. But if we wanna put a toilet in, let's say the Barberhill School or one of the other buildings that's there, well, we wanna be able to do that without going back and dig up the main. And that's the only reason that they're shown like that, so they're shown coming off the main, and they're capped. So you might say, well, why didn't we bring them right to the building? Well, there's a reason for that. Because if we bring them right to the building, the W P A P C A says, well, we're gonna consider that a connection. So the connection charge is sixty-five hundred dollars per building. So we've got, I think, five or six buildings, so it's another thirty-some odd thousand dollars to do that. There's no intention to do that at this point, so we're just simply showing laterals, there's not gonna be any expansion. But that's why they're there, because it makes sense to do it while we're putting the main in, because the cost is is minimal compared to going back and trying to do something later, whether it's ten years from now, fifteen years from now, whatever that might be. Property values, that's something we're gonna talk about, you've got some literature there that was handed out, Carly and me was gonna talk to you about that. But I think at this point, I'd like to have Lori DiMatista come up and talk to you a little bit more about noise and the building construction and how the building is actually, the interior of the building, how that's put together, because I don't think we were clear on that. And it does make a big difference as to how the building's gonna function in the noise that could potentially be permitted from the building. So let's say, what do we have, Lori, talk to you a little bit about that.
Good evening, I'm Lori DiMatista, registered and professional engineer, State of Connecticut. I'm also gonna have Nancy chime in too. We're gonna kind of put the story together about how the floor plan is gonna work out for the building. This top section is the largest section in the building. Our neighbors are to the north on my row. As we talked about in the last time, our construction around all the perimeter, there'll be a double wall system, it's gonna be a stacked roof system. The insulation in the wall is gonna be rockwood, which is the best material we can use for sound insulation. We're gonna have the outside wall two by six, inside's gonna be two inches of air gap, and there's gonna be one wall. So when sound hits a wall, it's absorbed, then starts to crack. And then behind that other area, that blank gap, sound is trying to find a way to keep going. So that's what that air gap does, it's that energy move it, and then it has another wall to go to. So that is how the construction of the actual wall is going to be, as you know from conversation, the windows, the direction, the east definitely have windows indoors that give an opportunity to look at the available tools. Majority of the area, that's about forty-seven hundred square feet. In this area, I'd like to have Nancy come and talk about this, the larger area is gonna be the area where we're gonna host some of the larger events. And Nancy, you wanna describe this?
Nancy Masters, Nebraska. I have been the rental agent for this town hall for twenty-two weeks. And I went back to two thousand and sixteen and made a little chart for myself, took several hours to look at every single application to see the types of events that were held. And one of the things that keeps continually coming up is weddings. From two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, about April, when we finally had to close, there were eight weddings. So that's like one and a half weddings per year. And I can't see us having maybe more than two weddings per year. However, our biggest was family reunions, birthday parties, showers. Those are not like weddings, those are totally different type of event. We also do several training sessions, and I can see training sessions here, or I can see training sessions.
It is what it is, this lower part here is an enclosed area, it's a smaller area, about fifteen hundred square feet. The events will be here. The events down here, or the people up here are the people that just need, I don't know whether you've been at a wedding, but sometimes I just need to get away from the music at my age, and I need to go find some space to sit just to chill out and calm down. That's this, it's blasting, it's like a porch, there is a sound wall here, we'll have the doors that are open this way. We can also have some seating out here, but the basic events are all here with the food coming out of the kitchen, the bathrooms, et cetera. So based on code, building code, they max people that I, that we wanna put in here, if there's one event at a time, it's two hundred and fifty people. We have another, we have a two-event day, shower, then maybe a wedding, or maybe another event here. This what, the area holds a hundred people, this is the lower area, and this then will hold a hundred and fifty people, and like we said before, it's a combination of excuse me, the visitors who are at the building, as well as the employees that may be hired to run the events. As Nancy had pointed out, we have a really large area for bathrooms against the building. We are maxing it out at two fifty, but because of building color, I have to use it, that it's a actual building could be. So these are basically on a lot larger number than we're hosting.
The other point is, North Central Connecticut, which we own, does not have an emergency center. We are installing showers here. This whole place could then become not just east wind This whole place could then become not just East Windsor. Enfield, Windsor Locks, whatever, say that. And we've had these events where the flooding of the river has. This room has had beds in it. I came in for a meeting on day and this room was filled with beds because there was no place to put people. Who had been displaced from their homes down by the river. So. You never know when a disaster's coming, and that's another use of this, and that's why we're. Putting showers, we also have the shower when we last, should go.
He wasn't saying. Um, and in this large area is the only area where the music will be played. The smaller area and outskirts, we talked about outside, no music will be outside. So all that nice heavy construction, because we have a full wall here, they're solid without windows and doors. On this side, we have one window, one door, and I mean every door, and the same on the other. So this whole area has. All the door, excuse me, all the walls, that's a double construction, but this room is where the music could happen. We rating um, on a system, we we found this out uh, at doing some additional digging, we had mentioned in the last meeting. That we need to regulate, you know, the sound related to distinct regulations. Where actually was a building code, and it's buried, and I found it. So as part of constructed, we do special inspections, and special inspection by engineer, Scott does them as well. We evaluate um, the structure as we go through, and we test. So basically, when we, when we build this structure, when we put those walls up. We actually put sound in here and we measure the sound, sound through the building. So we have to be at fifty-five D V during the day at the property line, and at night it's four and five, that's between ten and seven. So our um, regulations are this wall has to be at fifty-five, it's a rating that uh, building code has to meet. So that's gonna be in our special inspection. So I'm responsible, the builder is responsible, and you need that. And to James, um, everyone's welcome to have the test, that test is done by a third party. Um, also Nancy, let's talk a little bit about the um, the bathroom, in the catering area. So we do have catering, this is definitely where the caterer can warm up your dishes and break them out. But I know there was some discussion about having some training classes with the young kids, about cookie, cookies and stuff like that. Well, in scout hall is. Yearly, always had the Girl Scouts, sometimes Boys Scouts, but usually Girl Scouts. They do the cooking right in the scout hall. It's the only cooking we now allow in the scout hall. And we would not allow cooking, it's only heated up here and it's heated up in the scout hall. But for the youth groups. Yes, go ahead and use our ovens and make your gingerbread houses or your gingerbread.
Again, for the record, J R Russo, and I think. I'm sure Laura mentioned it, and I think the important factor is here is. At the last meeting, there was discussion about. Noise basically to the east, towards the patio area, and I think what we really wanted to point out was the fact that. This main entry or this main area here, the forty-seven hundred square feet is the area where any music would take place. So if there were a DJ or there were a band. They would be in here, and there is a fulminating wall here, interior to the building. And those doors would always be shut, so that if there were somebody here, these doors are open, there were some people out on the patio. That noise doesn't get to the outside, it's all within the area here where we've got the sound attenuation in terms of the insulation and so forth. So I wanna make it clear that. That has been considered in the building layout and it will be considered in the building construction, so that we don't get any noise. Coming out towards the east, towards the patio area, and that was a concern of. Uh, members of the public and the commission as well, I'm sure that we're all clear on that. Uh, that being said, I think at this point, maybe Carl and Alina wants to get up and talk to you a little bit.
I'll do the closing.
Okay, um, all right, I think I wanna go into just a little bit. In terms of uh, property values. And again, you you have some information that was handed out to you with regard to property values, and it talks about a number of different uses. In terms of property values. And you can see that, you know, it varies anywhere from three percent on up to fourteen percent, depending on what that use might be. Uh, none of them probably are really comparable to what we are doing. I I think our use is probably a less intense use than anything that was done uh, in that study that you have in front of you. But the other thing that I think is important to know here is the, is the aerial that I gave to you that shows what this property looked like. In short, years ago, in terms of, of, it was a bit of a mess. And and the neighbors are talking about how we're going to compromise their property values. And I said earlier, I think what we've really done is probably already increased their property values. And I wouldn't go further to say that if this project moves forward and the building is renovated. And turn into what we're gonna call a barn looking structure, it'd be more appealing than it currently is. But it again, will probably increase the property value. So I think Carl's gonna talk a little bit more about that when he, when he closes here. Um, but I I think it's fair to say that. That that we can look at this and and say that we we don't think we're gonna affect their property values, in fact, we think we're probably gonna help. And again, there was a lot of discussion about different things with regard to property values and traffic and so on and so forth and. And Scott, ask if this here, if you have any traffic question, but the other thing I'd just like to point out. And I kinda started thinking about this after the last meeting is that, you know, are there other places in town where we have a facility that's been similar to this? Or or what we have, and and there are, there are some, um. There's the Winolte uh, event facility, which isn't really comparable to the industrial parts, much larger than this. Uh, and it's right down to the state highway, but. But there are some others, um, you have Mylow on the Water, which was a revamp of of the old, uh, I don't know if it was. Was it the Nice Columbus? Uh, they did a beautiful job, it's it's a wonderful building, I'm sure probably most of you have been in there. Uh, it's not as large as this, I think maybe a hundred and fifty might be maximum capacity there, but it's a similar. Type of functioning building, it's the what we're talking about here, it's in a residential neighborhood, it's on a small. Depot street, a small town road, similar. And as far as I know, I don't know that there's ever been any real issues there, and I think it's something that's probably similar to what we're talking about here. Uh, the other thing that came to mind in terms of uh, an event space. Is the Reservoir Park, which is a town hall park. Terms of parking spaces and the number of people that could possibly go to an event there. There's a pavilion there, I think it's available for rental to the public. Uh, it's fairly large, there's certainly more than any parking spaces there. On a small town road, being Reservoir Road. No issues there that I'm aware of. They recently put in a band show there, and they have concerts there. And I believe they allow alcohol there. And once again, similar. Residential area, small town road. No issues that I'm aware of. So it's just something to think about as, as you get to the point where, where maybe you're gonna start thinking about this application and. And and approval or conditions of approval or whichever way you go with it, I'm not sure that that's how it is at this point in time, but. All that said, I just wanted to maybe just point at them. And at this point, I don't have any more to say unless you have questions, something specific, even Scott. Uh, something from a partner, Tim or Lauren, certainly we've given us their impressions that you might have.
Frank, wanna start down there? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to add some questions about how you. You obviously tried to explain how the, how the property values are. There isn't really any algorithm or any scientific basis on, on how, any changes affect property value. And again, if I heard you correctly, you were saying, in your opinion, you thought this would be. In your opinion, you thought it would be true, and perhaps logically it makes sense. But you don't know two or three years down the road. What's gonna happen?
Ten years ago, Nancy Masters Dry Street, ten years ago. The Historical Society bought the property next door with the Osborne House. Which many people probably would have put a cord around it in some dynamite. And destroyed it, because it had a hole in the roof all the way down to the basement, and we had mushrooms. We have restored that entire Osborne House and that property. Which also brought up the values of the neighbor.
How do you know that?
See, three things actually do. One of our members maintains the two greens. One directly in front of the church, one to the side of the church. Trees have been planted, flowers are always planted, it's always mowed, drainage has been taken care of. The sign in front of it, it's a historical sign. We had that taken down, sent back to the original manufacturer in Indiana, and had that redone. The other thing we did, we brought over the old schoolhouse, redid it, put it in. We have cleared up all the manure out of two of the barns. One was a hundred feet by fifty feet. This high with manure, the other one is about seventy-five by forty-five, manure up to the top. It was filled with flies. And then all of the stuff we cleaned up. The tires, the trash, the equipment, we're breeding mosquitoes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I understand all that, and I think that was great.
So we brought up the values. I'm not innocent. But if you were living with a house like there is at the Osborne House, totally robbing. We have another house just at the other end, which is probably bringing down the values. And if you please, anybody wants to drive in the driveway past the Osborne House. Turn and take a left, take a right, excuse me. Dyslexic. Go past the blue barn and take a look at the house. Next to our neighbors.
I I understand everything you're saying, and I think.
That's taking the values.
That's the thing I don't, I can't comprehend. I have, I, I've been on this commission a long time, and property values. There is no scientific algorithm or any, any way to set. You have your opinion, and I agree with a lot of the things you're saying. But you can't, it'd be very difficult as a commissioner to make a decision. That I'm not sure is correct.
And we've also cleaned up the land right across the street.
I understand all that.
And um.
I I think what Frank's trying to say is it's great you cleaned it up. What, you're gonna destroy these people's property values if this goes in, in my opinion, it's gonna destroy them.
May I address this question? Can I address this question?
When we have the public participation part, you may speak, sir.
Is she part of the public?
She's part of the applicant. So, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Attorney Carl Landalena, forty-seven Spring Street, Windsor Locks. So, um, it's a great question, Frank, and I understand uh, people's concerns. Um, so. When I look at this activity that's proposed for this building. I don't see something like a Manili's or Shadoz app. Uh, and I see something more like uh, the club, like a V F W or something like that, and the reason I say that. Is because the way this is going to be operated by members of your own community, the historic district. So, yes, there is going to be money made here in order to uh, finance other projects that they wanna do. But it's not like uh, uh, a great, you know, for-profit Manili's or or any of those kinds of facilities. So you've got that going for you. Now, when I say a club, I'm from Winnipeg, I grew up in. I know that's far away, all the way across the river. Windsor Locks is less than nine square miles. A third of that is taken up by the airport. Area wise, it is the smallest town in the state of Connecticut. We have a larger population than some other towns, because it's very dense. If you know Windsor Locks, Windsor Locks essentially, we're called, this square, is the ring around Windsor Locks is all industrial. Got the airport on one side, you got Route twenty over here, you got, you know, the the industry down by the canal and so on and so forth. The middle of it is very densely packed by residential homes. At one time, until very recently, there were six clubs in Windsor Locks. The K F C, the V F W, two Italian clubs, the Polish home, and another one I'm forgetting. So in an area of probably less than six square miles, there were six of these clubs, that they did exactly. What your facility could do, every one of them. The only one left now, unfortunately, is a Polish home, the ones that fallen like most clubs. K F C down here turned into a event facility. Alright, so with that back down, I've been practicing in Windsor Locks for thirty-five years. I'm not exaggerating when I tell you I've done five thousand real estate clubs. Hundreds of them in properties in Windsor Locks. And not once have I ever heard anyone say, of these places are not, they're embedded. I mean, they are surrounded each one of these by dense residential areas. Not talking there in the background or they're up off the street, these are a couple of them taken over by churches, alright? Not once have I, anybody ever said that those, the location of those facilities had any adverse impact. On property values in the town of Windsor Locks. And when we had the boom of the last few years. I can tell you based upon my own experience, and I guess I'm not testifying as a lawyer, but sort of a quasi-real estate expert in the town of Windsor Locks. That the values of those homes will have just as much as the value of every other house in Windsor Locks. They made that big jump. Now, I brought this issue to two appraiser. And uh, a real estate gentleman, in Windsor Locks, who's sold and resold. Over two thousand homes in Windsor Locks. Alright, over a thirty-year career, and I put this question to them and both of them, as a, you know, um. A man of the core, I, I'm not, you know, obviously I. You know, no skin in the game, but I'm not allowed to, you know, representing a client here, I'm not, you know, making this stuff up. They all told me, all of them told me, that this kind of project, based upon the fact that it's gonna be run by local people, will have. Little or no, more like the no adverse impact on real estate banks. So I don't, that's more anecdotal, I'm not an appraiser, but it uh. You know, that's the opinion, that's my opinion, that's as well as when you refer to the residents.
Windsor Locks is no comparison to Eastern, here is. Windsor Locks, you can't find a parcel to build a house in Windsor Locks. Yeah, we have farmland everywhere.
I understand. We're not talking about what might happen on another piece of farmland. But if you, to me, uh, Mr. Chairman, or I'm sorry, Chair. Yeah, so. If sixty points of Windsor Locks are embedded and surrounded. On all sides, every one of these facilities, by dense residential uses, you would think that that would have more of an impact. Than something on, you know, twenty, forty acres. And and keep in mind that, again, your regulations start off residential uses, I understand that. But the location of this, if you go, um. Maybe, any guys can turn, go back to the zoning law? Your town is unique, I I understand that. There's no question about that. Most towns don't even have agricultural zones anymore.
They don't.
In the town of Edfield, you need a special private department, which is ridiculous. But. Look at all the agricultural property that, this and the, the folks who are in the residential area. In that sort of octagonal, or octagon, whatever, that, yeah, they're surrounded by. Uh, farmland, agricultural profits. And a matter of fact, our nearest neighbors are actually the business zone, they're residential, that conforming residential uses. Um, so, you're right, you are, you have more farmland here as a percentage than. You know, I don't know, there are towns probably in the middle of the state, whereas, so you're right, it's not the same, but I think. The impact here would be less, but it would be in a town like Windsor Locks, because those places are surrounded by very dense residential uses. Now, if. This is your decision to make, I'm not telling you what to do, obviously, you know, we have an obligation, I think we've put on enough evidence. Through uh, substantial evidence. That we're not gonna impact property values, but that's what you're gonna have to make.
Sorry, but it's alright. So Windsor Locks. Were those six clubs up before the residents all appeared up around them? Or did they come in afterwards? You had your six clubs, and then the town expanded and added residents around them, so those. So those people.
That's the older section of the house, because some of those houses are well over a hundred years old. The new, uh, strange people, which is now a church, the newer building, it's only the sixties and seventies. The IPC, which is an older part of town. Was, you know, is probably close to seventy years ago.
So that means the houses came in after those built.
Correct.
So.
In many cases, yeah.
Thought those residents accepted what their neighbors were going to be at the time.
Yes.
You're asking us to. Allow an event club to come in when the people have no choice. Exactly.
I don't think I have a choice, you are the business owner. You're asking me for something.
Just trying to find some clarity.
Yeah, no, but you're right.
Before the horse arrived.
Understand.
The the difference here is, when you're going out to purchase a property. You do your due diligence, you see what's, what you're near. If you're buying near an airport, if you're buying near an event facility, if you're buying near an industrial area. But. If you're buying near a farm, and then it changes. That's not what you're buying.
Well, as a zoning attorney, we go to this argument all the time. The one thing you can count is change. Things change over time. And. If you look back at, uh, your used map, which you have probably at Pino's Gate, twenty or thirty years ago. A lot of, some of your farmland has been brought up, been turned into developments. Right, right, so, I mean, things like that, that occurred.
But when we're talking values, when you're talking about.
Right.
Value when somebody bought it as a residence, and then it became next to. Uh, an event facility or some type of other industrial use. That's when the value gets affected. Not at the time of the purchase.
Well. What what evidence is there?
I'm not saying positive or negative, I'm telling you it's affected.
That's my whole point. That's my whole point. And we can't make a decision, we can't decide whether it's good or it's bad. There's no, there's no basis for, that I know of.
So, so speaking of change.
Can I answer Frank's question? But this is a condition of every single special permit that you've ever granted. Property values, it's in your regulations, have you dealt with it before?
Well, we can deal with it every time, I do.
Yeah.
It just doesn't, it hasn't come up very often, and it's been, it seems to be a problem.
Yeah, it's supposed to come up every time.
It does.
Right, so, how have you dealt with it in the past?
We dealt upon it, whatever the applicant was going to do, what was going to affect.
Right.
And again, in my opinion, when you're talking about health, wealth, and safety. The wealth part is very, very ambiguous.
So it's welfare.
The the health, the health is obvious.
Mm-hmm.
The safety is something you can talk about.
Right.
That seems to be my, my, my real concern.
Yep.
And I, and I. I would be remiss if I didn't say that the Historical Society has done wonders for this town.
Right.
Really, they have, and it'd be commended upon your presentation, Jay and all of you. But there's some questions that I, in my opinion, have, I have concern about.
Yeah, perhaps we could, that's fine.
Perhaps we can deal with them and and straighten them out. I hope we can.
So, as I said, speak, speaking of change, um, if this special permit gets approved. So now we have farms. I asked this question two minutes ago. We have farms all over. The town.
Mm-hmm.
So what's gonna stop someone like the wall, we have the dance hall. Already built, and that's a farm. To come in or somebody, other property, and do the same thing you're gonna try to do here.
Well, nothing.
So anybody who has a farm can do the same.
But you understand. First of all. We're not asking you to do a text amendment or a zone change. You folks decided after a long process, ended up adding this as. A use that was permitted by special permit in all agricultural zones. I didn't decide that, you did. Okay, so we're taking advantage of that. Decision that you made, and I assume. That the process you went through is, how do we help farms? Stay in farms? Because in this day and age, if you don't diversify as a farm. You're not gonna be farming much longer. But every case is judged individually. Want to sign plants as special party, so. That question is gonna be left up to you, which properties are. Is this appropriate as a use in the internet, that's, that's your decision, ultimately.
So, the next, next farm regs round, there might be some changes.
Sure.
You're still farming. The land is still in farm.
Dave, you have any other questions?
I actually have a question about the data block. That. Jay, if you don't mind, Jay, I'm just doing some clarification of something. You had talked about a, a front yard with a measurement of twelve point, twelve point two feet existing. But yet it's required to be a fifty-foot setback, so you're under that specification for it.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I caught that.
Yes, and the reason is, is that it's the Osborne House, it was built prior to any zoning regulations, just as many older homes in the academy. They were built right up close to the road, because there were no cars. We had horses and wagons, and they typically were built right on the edge of the road, and that's why that setback is only twelve feet. And doesn't meet the requirement, so it's, it's what we call an existing non-conforming or grandfather use of the road.
Okay.
So, and it happens all the time.
Okay. That was one of my big questions, was the block you had gone to, you exposed the block to last name.
Right, and and that was a question I think that we brought up, uh, by Mike at the last meeting, is. There's a section in one of the regs in section three, I think, that talks about. These special permit users had to meet the minimum requirement of the B two zone. Bulk table. Which talks about minimum frontages and lot area and setbacks and so forth and coverage laws. And so we added that to it, although quite frankly, I'm still not quite sure what it means, but anyways. I know we need it all and exceed all the requirements in that B two bulk table, so we added it to the plan. Okay.
Um, somebody at the last meeting. Um, in the public comment. Raised a concern over idling of vehicles behind the building. There's no parking behind the building. But there, and I saw you put up no parking signs. Um, I was wondering if. At the doors where people would load and unload. It would be appropriate to have no idling signs, and somebody raised that concern. Or.
JR Russo, that's correct, somebody did bring that up, and actually had a discussion with Ruth about that.
Mm-hmm.
And if. Should this move forward and be built, there will be signs added, and actually there's signs available, I think, for the state. Uh, that would be posted. At the, uh, area next to the service area and addition, which would say no items of interest. So to make sure everybody shuts their nickel on, but you are correct, there are no parking spaces on the west side.
And I saw you added no parking signs. Thank you.
Jim, you're good?
Okay, I just want to bring one item to your attention. So, in chapter six, six hundred point two, to be exact. Um. It talks about landscape buffers. And it requires a hundred feet between. Commercial, industrial use. And residential use. And then the, the important part here is. At the discretion of the commission. It may be reduced by fifty percent. So currently. You don't meet the hundred-foot setback on the building. So you would need. Us to grant. A special permission to reduce that balcony area requirement. In order for this to proceed, so that will require a separate vote on that item.
Give me one second here. Again, for the record, JR Russo, so the landscape buffer requirement is in six hundred dot two, I think.
Correct.
You're into. And, and it's, it's something that you have seen before, we have talked about before. Um. The two quick ones that come to mind are the Noble Station on one forty, ACI Auto on the five. And I know there's others, but I honestly don't recall. Where, based on the addition of. Uh, dense plantings and fencing. That the buffer can be reduced by fifty percent. And what it actually says is, and the wording is a little confusing. It says at the discretion of the commission, the buffer requirement shall. Be reduced by fifty percent. If dense plantings consisting of evergreens, no less than six feet, plant the twenty-foot on center and two staggered rows. Solid fencing shall be six feet height, constructed from low maintenance material. And, and the way it's worded, it says, if we provide that. It's reduced by fifty percent, doesn't say may, it says shall. And it doesn't also say that it requires a separate vote. Doesn't say that anywhere.
Under our discretion, it would have to be a. A consensus. And I read that as the shall means that we're not gonna pick it as. Ninety-eight. Forty-eight, whatever, it, it's, if we're gonna reduce it, it shall become fifty percent, so it's either fifty or a hundred.
So it's not seventy-five.
So we're not thinking, saying, oh, I want it to be eighty-two, I want it to be, it's either fifty or a hundred.
I guess you could read it that way, and I know we. You looked at it in the past, and I, I don't remember whether it was a separate vote, I forgot.
We have voted on it.
Okay.
Right, okay. That's all I have.
And, and as you see on the plan, we have provided all those things that are required in terms of fencing and screening and evergreens.
I just wanted to. Be aware that it's not guaranteed.
Yep, oh no, understood.
You have anything else?
I don't have anything more.
And so this is a public hearing, I will, uh. Open this up now for the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, Happy New Year. It's, it's still close enough to the first, let's, uh. Let's hope that this coming year, you know. A lot better, at least health-wise and, uh. Other ways than, than last year. So I, I'm happy to be here, um, even though it's my fourth shot. And, and.
Yourself officially for the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Again, it's Mark Needleman, attorney with a practice in Bloomfield. I've been before you on the prior occasions, I won't go into my background, the record reflects it at least twice. Thanks for reminding me, um. I, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't call you Frank and you Mike, I just don't have that level of familiarity, so please. It's no disrespect if I say Mr. Kowalski or Ms. Obin or whatever. So, um. Not a local guy, I just. You know, look at. Your regulations, I've looked at your plan of conservation development, I looked at the plans, I listened to what's being said and offered. And then I offer my two cents, um. If, if someone asks me. How would you summarize this whole application? I would say, you know what? They're trying to force a square peg through a round hole. That's, that's how we view it. Now, that's a little simplistic, of course, but. I'll show you why. That's what I'm thinking. We have some credibility issues here, and I'm not looking. To point fingers at anyone or criticize anyone. We've been through, what, four sets of plans, because the first set. Didn't even present half of what your regulations require. The applicant has. A very fine and experienced team, um, so. It's not because they didn't know better. I don't understand. Why on day one we didn't get. An appropriate application, or even day two, and why it's taken us four times. To try to get closer to the point. Where you might be able to, to make an informed decision. Came on somebody. I'm also concerned, I'll be candid, that the named applicant or the applicant's agent. John has not been here last time or this time. Um. And there's some questions that haven't been answered. And, and it goes to credibility, most specifically that pipeline from across the street through, at first, didn't know about it. Then we heard how a construction company. Brought in by him was involved in it. And now we hear that the town engineer says, well, maybe there is a pipe there, but it's not on the plans. Well, you're right, it's not on the plan, because no one came in and sought a proper permit for it. But we know it's there because you heard from the immediate neighbor. That John had a confrontation with him in trying to clean out the line that goes through his yard. Okay, so clearly it exists. Why weren't these people honest and candid about it? I, I don't get it. I, I, it's troubling, it's troubling. Now, we did hear about. Sound insulation measures, and, and certainly, I'm happy to hear that there was sensitivity to it. Um. We've been in buildings, all of us, uh, where they're constructed to latest. Specs and standards with. Insulating concerns in mind. Half the time, it just doesn't work, let's just be honest. Um, but I can be more specific. Nobody addressed, but I'm sure we'll hear it on a fifth. Uh, nobody's addressed the HVAC compressors. That are gonna have to be on site, I, I didn't see them on the plan, although maybe I missed them, um, but I think they're rather significant. Uh, pieces of equipment, if he can fool that facility. They're gonna be, they're gonna be generating significant noise outside, they're not within a soundproof room, nor can they be, or they wouldn't operate. Um. Think about the summer or the winter, I'm not talking about the swing seasons, when either. There's a demand for heater AC, those things are gonna be cranking. And at night, if you were the neighbor. You're not gonna be too happy. Now, Ms. Masters, who's done some great things here in town, from what I've heard, and, and I. Commend her for her efforts, so, please don't misinterpret what I, I say to you, but. We compared apples and oranges, we talked about the Boy Scout Hall. With few weddings. But they don't allow alcohol. You think that might be the reason that were few weddings in that venue? I suspect that's the reason. Jay has mentioned there are alternate sites available in town that exist or quit exist. Something to bear in mind when we talk about. Trying to force the square peg through the round hole. Mr. Gavie, you're correct, it is very difficult. To provide empirical evidence regarding values. Very difficult. Okay? But I think I have a relatively simple and common sense, because if you don't have empirics. Then you've been elected to use common sense. And the common sense. Here's the question I pose to you. If you had a choice. Of buying next to this event venue, assuming it is built. Or a similar home. Next to agricultural land. Would you pay as much for the one next to the event venue as you would next to the agricultural land? Again, I asked you to use your common sense. Mr. Chairman, you're correct about the buffer in the regulation six hundred point two, um. Fact of the matter is that if, if the firm proposed is built. Um, we have a ninety-foot gap approximately between the property line and the building, as we've shown before. Um, so. If it becomes fifty, we're talking, you know, close to fifty remaining. And, again. If you had a choice. Of buying two similar properties, but one. Fifty feet from. This firm. And the event venue, and. One that has an open agricultural vista. Which one would you pay a little? which one would you pay a little more for? Or to put it a different way, which one would you pay a little less for? Maybe more than a little less? Now, I'll share something with you. I took the latest plan and marked it up, colored it up. This is the agricultural area. Here are the existing historical buildings, society buildings. And again, for the fourth time, I'm gonna say, nobody has an issue with the historical society. This isn't about the historical, so they have done great things in town, and I think they'll continue to do great things in town. It's just, this isn't one of them. Okay? So all the black, this is actually brown, and I'll explain, all the black and the crosshatch black and the blue, as well as the brown, are impervious surfaces. Okay, and I'm gonna explain why that's important. So just keep in mind, as you look at this, impervious, all of this will be added. All of this will become impervious. The regulations specifically say that plans should provide for pervious surfaces. That, given the options for alternatives, the regulations say no impervious. Look at it all. Is that consistent? Hmm, I don't think so. But let's, let's talk about two other things which are great concern. Handing out a map and a deed. These items were discussed at the last meeting, supposedly to answer the issue of whether or not there were existing easement drainage rights on the property. The document I handed you has the deed from the Schultz's predecessor who sold land. And you were told that that deed provided for a drainage easement. And that's why they could design a plan that channeled all of this water through the Schultz's property. The plan is totally dependent on that being the case. I'm told, I wasn't here, but I'm told that you were told last time that a new and different plan would be presented, but it hasn't been. That's because it can't. So you have the deed, and the point of deed is, if you look at it, and I highlighted certain provisions, and this is the deed the applicants represents made reference to. There is zero reference to any type of drainage easement. Zero. The deed does make reference to a map, and that's the front page of the map. In two thousand eighteen, when they did the lot line adjustments, and I colored it in a bit for you. There is absolutely no indication on that map of a drainage easement from the subject property onto the Schultz's property. They do not have the legal right to discharge their water, and certainly no additional water into a new system, retention pot, and then dumping it all, including surface flow. Because these, this is the natural topography onto an adjoining property. They are going to negatively impact, assuming they could do it, which I'm not sure they can, and I'll address that. But there'd be no question, if they're gonna channel and dump all this water onto his property, you don't think that doesn't have a negative impact on property value? And then all of this keeps going, and as we said before, ends up in the Stantic River. Now, again, I want to commend the society for cleaning up a lot of this property. It's definitely better than it was then, there's no question. And, and I think everyone appreciates that. So why do you want to go backwards? Why do you, now that you've cleaned it up, it's no longer a total ice ore, although there's a caveat, and I'll share it with you. I don't seem to have these caveat. Why would you want to mess up all the good things you've done with the property by building this, this hall? So with respect to the stewardship of the land and what you've done with it, here are some photographs of the existing situation showing large piles of debris, large piles of cut lumber, stripped land, and then the outflow of the drainage pipe onto the Schultz's property. And if you look at the outflow, you'll see what can only be described as some pretty nasty stuff. Not sure what it is, but I'm pretty sure it's nothing good, it's nothing any of you would want flowing onto your property. And that's without a major developer. Now, there's another serious problem with this application. And you notice I have things in red, red is danger, danger, okay? So there's the easement, dumping all the water into his neighbor's property. And then just look at this line here, this big red line here going through the whole property. Oh, and by the way, look what it goes through. Goes directly through the retention pond. Now, why is that an issue? Well, it's an issue because the United States government has a permanent easement on this red line here. And the terms of that easement, which are recorded on the land records, says that nobody can mess with the government. In other words, you can't build, you can't mess it up, you can't send surface flows over it, you can't store water under it, you can't interfere with their rights. And why do they have these rights? This wasn't the big bad government coming in and imposing this. This was part of the quid pro quo when the government gave the town all that land, took a permanent conservation easement with a permanent right to access it to make sure nobody's going back there and messing it up. So the answer, ladies and gentlemen, how can anyone come in here with a plan that dumps all this water illegally, without legal right, onto a neighbor's property? How can anyone come in with a plan where they're building a large-scale water detention retention system, and it is a system? It's not just a little, you know, depression, right in the place of the government's easement? Again, I mentioned credibility issues. I don't understand how professionals would come in with a plan like this with such obvious glaring problems and legal issues, and either not address them or suggest to you, as was the last meeting, that, well, there were answers to the easement question, those would be provided, or they're in the deed as shown in the map, and you have it now in front of you. It wasn't presented when it was claimed, now you have it. It ain't there, ladies and gentlemen.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is all this your drives, or is this done by a professional association? Is this just your interpretation of the lines?
No, no.
Who did this?
All, all of it, this was Ussery's plan, all I did was colored it in.
Based upon?
His plan. No, it was all there, for instance.
The question is, all, all the coloring you did, was based, was that done by an engineering firm, or just based upon what your research said?
No, no, this was Mr. Ussery's plan, and he notes, it's his note, twelve-foot access easement in favor of now formerly the United States of America. He said that. I just colored it in so you could see what it is. That's all, I didn't alter his plan at all. And this, this was his channeling, this diagram, I just outlined it in red, no changes. So this existed in the plan, all in the black. It's on the plan, the purple, those are the water pipes. Okay, again, on the side, the only thing I added, and I thank you for reminding me, added two things. The catch basin, which was conveniently omitted on the other side. And I put the church in just to give some perspective, okay? And I added the note, because it says, existing pump house, I wrote, well, is approximately twenty feet from the road. Those are the only changes to the plan, otherwise it's Mr. Ussery's plan. I, you're welcome. I too have some studies for you. You know, you can read a study that says anything, anytime, anyplace, if you look hard enough, I suppose. And as was already noted, many of the studies don't have this exact scenario, let's face it, it doesn't come up too often. But it has the general idea and concept entitled, why is noise pollution, what is noise pollution, and how does it affect property values? And these are scientific studies, again, not precisely the same situation, but the general statements provided certainly tend true here. I have another study, it's entitled, The Impact of Noise on Residential Property Value. And again, with the caveat that the circumstances aren't exactly the same that they've pointed out, but the general statements certainly apply to this situation as well. So at least we tried to come in with some reports, we don't have the resources to hire experts, we're not funded the way the applicant is. Again, it's something it doesn't make or break, it gives you additional insight. And I think with your common sense and your knowledge of the community, it gives you a greater understanding of the issue.
It's hard for me to think about the center of London.
No, exactly, that's why I said, it's no, the, the examples aren't the same, but the corollaries that they, they show, those were the examples, because to be honest, who cares about a little farmland in East Windsor, Connecticut? That's not gonna warrant a study being done, like, you know, it just doesn't, so, but the conclusions as opposed to the circumstances are, are what I asked you to consider. Now, reference was made to the new and updated possible events schedule, took a look at it. Don't know why, wasn't this way to begin with, but I suppose better this way than what they started with. The top is private, small, public events, small, which they define as less than two hundred and fifty. I don't know how small that is, but I guess relative to bigger, it's smaller. I've starred a few of the items, showers and weddings, dances and proms, birthday, anniversary parties, corporate events and retreats, with the notation likely to have loud noise and alcohol. Then I have one where clearly alcohol's involved, that would be a wine tasting. And then one, which is a great program, I but you can't tell me it's not gonna change the nature of the property, and that's a Civil War reenactment. Cam and Fire and Muskets going on is, is not consistent with a residential area, or even the typical agricultural area. Before I hit my summary, I just want to show you a similar map to the one I presented. It's in much smaller scale, and I will provide the larger one to the planner to be made part of the record, because it's, it's clearly a better diagram, but you're not gonna have those the large one to refer to individually, I suspect, so I did my best. Again, I took Mr. Ussery's plan and I colored it in, adding a few notations, you know, my handwriting, obviously, but I didn't change anything on the diagram itself. So let me kind of end with where I started the very first night. Set October, when, when was that? It'll launch. Section three oh five point one of your regulations, farm regulations purpose. The purpose of this section is to promote the preservation of agricultural land. Promote the preservation of it while preserving the public health, safety and welfare. Section three oh five point seven, which is what I was referring to earlier, where drive items and parking are required permeable, not imper, permeable surfaces are encouraged. They went out of their way to provide serious blacktopping, I, I don't know why, I think it's more, so maybe you know better than me. Section two hundred point two in the interpretation. It says, in their interpretation application, the provisions of these regulations, the zoning regulations, shall be held to the minimum requirements. Minimum. Not standard, not maximum, minimum requirements, section two hundred point two, page four of your zoning laws. Please, I ask you to keep that in mind when you're looking at the bigger picture. Now, section seven oh one, special permit findings. In seven oh one point one, it states for a special permit, you've got to make a finding that the proposed use is in general accordance with the relevant provisions of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And, and I'm gonna remind you in a moment what those are, but in two words, it's preserving. In two words, it's preserving farmland. Their plan does not show you. That they're preserving farmland. Section seven one point two A says, the proposed use shall be of such location. Size and character. That in general will be in harmony. With the appropriate orally development. Of adjacent properties. So what are the adjacent properties? Homes. Church. Cemetery, uh, not sure how many will complain, but families may be concerned. Their families may not appreciate it. Seven oh one point two C. The proposed use will not alter. The essential characteristics of the area. Or adversely affect property value. In the neighborhood. So we have an event space. Several hundred people coming and going, vehicles, buses. Vans, trucks, limousines. Serving and selling liquor. You know, can be an open bar, it's not, you know, unheard of. Uh. Music and noise into the night. Parking spaces, you know, we talked a little bit about it. And then they squeezed a few in. Take a look to the, uh, to the right. Of the barn building, there's several parking spaces. To the right of it. Do you notice how to the right of those spaces is the dumpster enclosure? So they're gonna have three or four, maybe five cars. Parking in front of the dumpster. Is that real? Why did they decide it that way, that just? Makes no sense. Seven oh one point three eight, adequate access. We've talked a lot about whether the screets. Are designed and can handle things. Twenty plus feet, no curves. Near the most dangerous intersection in town. No matter what. It ain't gonna get better. It can only get worse. Seven oh four, seven oh one point four, adequate infrastructure. The water supply, sewage disposal and stormwater drainage systems. Conform with accepted engineering criteria. And complies with all standards of the applicable regulatory authority. So the applicable standards and regulatory authority would say. You can build a big pond in the middle of the government's easement, I, I think they'll take exception to that. And I don't think. The appropriate. Regulations. Would find that it's okay to dump all this water onto a neighbor's property. Without a legal right to do so. Seven oh one point five, natural resource conservation. The proposed plans must provide for protection of the environment of the area. Doesn't say. Won't hurt it. It says got to protect it, it's a higher standard. Now, the proposed plan. Will drain ultimately into the Stantic River. Assuming they ever could have the legal right. To channel their water onto the Schultz property. Now you have a photo of, of what is coming out of that pipe now. Can you imagine what would come out of that pipe? With this kind of. Intensive use. Seven oh one point six C, it's gotta be a compatible design. The applicant suggests that if they put red siding on the blue barn. It's gonna become compatible. That's for you to decide, um. I think it can be fairly debated. Um, but. We know it's a rural, quiet setting, there is no nighttime activity. That clearly would change. No matter how you cut it, it would change. Seven oh one point eight is the residential impact. Says any use or proposed activities. Located adjacent to a residential. Will not impair values. Considering. The location and size of the proposed use. The nature and intensity involved or conducted with the proposed use. I don't think you're gonna have an easy time. If at all. Making that finding, but again, that's within your prerogative. Uh, in Bailey Wicks. They didn't initially comply with your requirements on the traffic study, but after we pointed that out. I don't know why it took us to do it, they realized they had to and. Fortunately, uh, they did hire somebody. Who's competent, um. And that's his opinion, that's up to you whether you feel that. Satisfies any and all concerns. Now. Your regulations say that an application and use must conform to the plan of conservation and development. Page one of the plan of conservation development. Says. Additionally. The planning and zoning commission must. Must. Not may. Must. And should. Utilize the plan of conservation development when making land use decisions. That's your guiding principle. That's your bible here in town. You can change it if you deem appropriate every ten years, cause state law says so. But unless and until you do. That's the law of the land, that's what you've agreed to. Uphold and base your decisions on, and what the law will, will hold you to. In analyzing a decision. It's not a pie in the sky statement or wish, it says you must. Page four, the plan of conservation development. It's clear that the plan is the roadmap. For the town's future. Right, just talk about the past, talks about going forward. In ten year increments. It says, once the plan of conservation development is adopted. And you or your predecessors. Were the ones who did that, the zoning commission, planning commission. Says, once it's adopted, the focus, and again, they use the word must, not may, but must. Be put on implementation of the goals and strategies. It will be the responsibility of staff. Boards and commissions. And residents. And that's why they've been here all these meetings. To work together to meet these goals. Age forty, conservation development. Very, very important. And there's even a case in the spring court here in Connecticut. Where they said, where, I said Windsor, cause it was a Windsor case. The same commission functions in both planning and zoning, as you do. It's logical to assume that the action of the commission. Would be guided by its own recommendations in the master plan. That's what the plan of conservation used to be called, the master plan. In which the commission believes the miss valley should achieve coordinated development. Now, chapter two. Of your P O C D says. Conservation of the town's natural, open space, scenic, cultural and historical resources. Will help to address the plan's vision, the vision of the plan. Of preserving the rural character that defines East Windsor, that defines East Windsor. And makes it different than Windsor locks. Defines East Windsor and keeps the town an attractive place to live. The town of Windsor is in a unique position of being able to continue to preserve our rural character. While promoting economic development along the business quarters. To meet this goal. The town must continue. To preserve open space, agricultural. And historical resources. With a thoughtful process while promoting compatible economic development. In the commercials. The primary conservation strategy, page seven. Is to preserve, and here's the word, more open space in East Windsor. Not maintain it. Not minimize the loss. But preserve more. More, that's, that's your charge. And that's the standard upon which you're legally obligated to judge any application. Again, it's for you to decide whether the application does it, but that's the standard you must employ. Page eight of your plan says. The preservation of more open space is one of the most effective. And comprehensive strategies. That East Windsor can follow. To achieve the plan's vision. Ladies and gentlemen. This is paving, not preserving. Page forty of your plan. For the Scantic Village Plans. Goal is to preserve the historic character. Preserve the rural agricultural character. And enhance the agricultural character. We're hearing about hosting large scale events with speakers, amplified music, cars, trucks, limos, buses. Alcohol drinking. Doesn't sound like that's gonna help preserve the historic. Characteristics of Stanford Village. Your staff report says. The plan of conservation provides support for villages. To be designated with new zoning. Villages to be designated with new zoning. The plan of. Development does not call for villages. To be designated with new zoning. To promote business and tourism. There's a side note on the page, a side note. That said, many. People had certain thoughts and feelings about whether that's a good idea or not, and you can look at it. But the bottom line is, notwithstanding that. You or your predecessors decided that that would not be incorporated. Into the. Plan of development. Nor is this case. An application for new zoning. So I respectfully suggest that the staff comment in that regard is not applicable. I am getting in the end. Page forty one of the plan of development says. It's scanty. Enhance and protect historic resources. The character of the land in the vicinity. And the view shed of those resources. I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, an event venue does not protect the historic resources or character of the land. In the vicinity of this area, but again, that's your fault. The view shed will be negatively impacted. By a berman fence. Lighting. And the latest proposal is. To put a long, long fence along the property line. With the Schultz's. Not sure why, because they didn't ask for it, um. Maybe someone thinks that would benefit them. But the Schultz property is at a much higher elevation. And, uh, the fence isn't gonna make a difference. The applicant argues that the operation of event facility will further the operation of the historical society. And support the continued preservation of property. In accordance with the plan of development, that's, that's their argument. Again, I respectfully suggest this is not the town of Windsor preserving property. As contemplated by your plan. This is allowing a private corporation. Nonprofit, but a private corporation. To make money. Under the guise that it could be used to preserve the land. But it doesn't have to be. So again, we asked the question we asked earlier. Why spend two million dollars or more to rebuild a barn? Mr. Tribble's donation of two million dollars put in a conservative account. Would yield at least a hundred thousand dollars. Per year of interest. Certainly that would support, uh, the historicals. Society's needs. With no reduction of open space. No disruption to the community. So I ask. Why are we tearing this community apart? Why is the applicant? Press this despite hearing everything. And knowing how the community feels. With very limited exception, the only ones you've heard. Supporting the plan are the paid professionals. Or members of this society, there may have been one or two others, um. Hardly overwhelming public support. When have you seen this community so galvanized? They've come to four meetings. And in overwhelming numbers, even. Cold winter nights. And have told you how and why. You can and should deny this special permit. They, as I'm sure you do, I know you do, cause you wouldn't be sitting here if you didn't. Care deeply about this town. In Scantic Village, even though. Many of them don't live in Scantic Village. So there's no immediate. Personal interest, it's a greater interest for the. Entire community. They've spent their own money responding to this application. And don't have an out of towner. Special interest. To fund them. This is a grassroots. Situation. And they ask. If it happens here. Where's next? If this with all the issues and all the problems. Warrants approval. One can only worry about. Where we go from there. So in conclusion. I only ask you this, to please step into their shoes, meaning the neighbors and the residents. And then we know you'll do the right thing.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the plan of conservation and development.
Yes, sir.
Are you telling me or the commission? That we are legally bound to follow exactly what that says?
I read it to you, I'll read it to you again.
That is not, that is not, uh. Guideline, I've, I've been on this commission long enough to go through three of them. And we obviously it changes every ten year, because the surrounding economy and everything changes.
Yeah.
So it's a guideline for us. It's a guideline for us, it's not, it's not written in stone. And that's the way I understand it to be, and perhaps I've been wrong for thirty years.
I can only. Tell you that what I've read to you. Out of your own. Is, are your documents. And, and one legal case, um. Again, it's up to you to decide.
I'm, I'm glad, I was glad you brought it all up, I'm just wondering about the analogy of it.
For argument's sake, perhaps some different way, or for argument's sake. Let's say. It isn't a hundred and ten percent binder, you know what I mean? Okay? Is there any question? That it tells you. Gives you the roadmap I discussed. Tells you. Cause you adopted it, what the communities.
It, it gives me the goal and the roadmap to get there.
Is, yeah.
It can be.
No question about that.
It's kinda like playing football. The goal is to get a touchdown, okay? And the. Government or no one tells, tells the players how they should do it, only the coach tells, so it's to get there. So that. The goal. Is not the law, it's the goal.
Well, and to use your analogy. And what is the coach's use? Uses the playbook. And your playbook, ladies and gentlemen.
And that changes from game to game.
That's right, but for this game, it's your current plan of conservation and development. After you adopt a new one. The playbook may change, but tonight. This is the playbook.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Anyone else that'd like to speak?
Um, my name is John Ragers. Uh, I live at forty four Willam Road. Less than a mile from the, the Poe. Uh, I live at forty-four Willam Road, less than a mile from the proposed. Bankrupt facilities. I'm gonna make some comments that go along with this, this isn't exactly, I'll probably add live along the way, but just here, so we refer to afterwards. There's a couple of, um. Couple of picture pages in the back section, which are. The aerial view, the page of the P O C D and. Um, one of the colored versions of this. Um, so you can refer to those two, but you know your own zoning. Documents or whatever. I'm originally an architect, and I've spent most of my career. Um, in architectural engineering environments where I work alongside of civil engineers, structural engineers, mechanical plumbing, et cetera. And I know how to read site drawings and civil engineering drawings and I know what a catch basin looks like and. I can tell you that the professionals who are here, they're fantastic job. They, I mean, they. I'm sure I think I have a good idea what it costs, um, and it wasn't a, a small effort, but they did a terrific job doing that, very thorough. Giving you the concepts, the details for the. The owners of the project. Unfortunately, I think this is the very thing that clued me in that. This project was wholly not compatible with the rural village. And um, I have presented in front of many town planning, zoning and building officials. Um, in the past, not the past few years, but usually I'm this, I'm on the side of the. Commercial or bigger developers, um, that want to have these plans that show a lot of the mitigation elements. That we've been talking about through all these things, and usually I'm on that side and usually I'm trying to do this for, um. Some kind of an industrial park or business park or something that sort of makes sense. And I can't remember a time when I've seen organized opposition to a project like this, because obviously they've done a good job with, with what they're doing. And I've heard a lot of talk about the regulations in the zoning and like sort of the dimensional and bulk and area requirements and. Those are easy to address, you can always manipulate the numbers to see which way you want them to go, but, um. The tough part for your board and for a lot of people is the subjective evaluation. And this is sort of, uh, I, I, I didn't have any contact with this gentleman beforehand, but. This sort of dovetails on what he was saying. The part that I wanted to address is. The, the phrases, the like harmony to the area compatibility with the town P O C D. And I think what these people want this board to see is the, that the very scale of the mitigation elements. That have been drawn up and presented to you are the most obvious measure of the incongruity of this project with Scantic Village. It's kind of like having an elementary school or a small middle school or something proposed for being with a hundred feet of. Residential houses and make no mistake, that is a business zone, there's five. Business, uh, business lots along that area, but those are residences. You can live within, you can have residential within business, and you know that, so. You know, calling it a business zone, what it really is being used for is residential. Um, I would like to say sort of a background qualifier, um. I read all the East Windsor zoning regulations, I've done some building, the town, I used to work with some of the building inspectors there. Um, I read the plan of conservation development, believe it or not, um, didn't put me to sleep. I've read the mission state of the conservation commission, the goals of the East Windsor Historical Society. And all the submissions that have, that have been to this board, and I can test, I've been down getting some of them from her. Um, I personally been inside the blue barn, the pole barn, which is actually, it is a dirt floor indoor riding ring. Uh, my soon to be stepdaughter took lessons in there and I stood in that barn and it's just a pole barn, it's not a barn barn. So indoor riding ring with a dirt floor and some stalls along one side. Um, I have attended functions at the scout hall. I've done the pine wood derby and I've been in other places like that, so I'm kind of familiar with what goes on down there. I've driven around there, looked at their parking lots and their parking lot lights and tried to imagine some of those comparisons. I've been in the German club as a member of the Broadbrook Angling Society. And I've been at the Lenote Bank, banquet facility, and they're all different. And. People have brought up places over Windsor locks and other places, the Merlot and the Nutmeg and places in town and. None of those facilities, except for maybe Lenote. And some of the bigger ones, none of them have the mitigation elements that this project has. Um, I thoroughly reviewed the website, the East Windsor Historical Society, and also for the whole comp farm over in Granby, which. As I understand, was sort of an early model for this project. And so, and I've also read all the primary minutes for this and watched all the videos. So, and I've attended a couple of them, so I'm not just walking in here off the street. I've done a little bit of homework on this whole thing. Um, as I see it, there's five real character assessment issues that are going on here, we've kind of all talked. Site, sound, traffic, drainage and historic preservation. And they've been deemed to be so major on this project. That this really credible, professional team at great expense was needed to design the mitigation elements for each one of these issues. And on other projects that I've been involved with, the mitigation measures that I've seen retention ponds, catch basins, lots of drainage, parking lots. Curbs, um, cut off luminaires and all these things and berms with sight and visual benefits. Um, they've all been used for bigger projects, going into industrial parks, and I said before, things like. Industrial parks, business parks and commercially zoned areas, not quaint little villages. And so judging by the expansion notes on the plan, it seems pretty likely that. This will be, um, going on to be more of a bigger commercial situation. I know we've heard that maybe they're just connection to the other buildings, but. One thing leads to another always snowballs. Um, for a glimpse into the, into the thinking of the town, um, and I think the P O C D was, I, you know, with attorney just said. It really is a roadmap, and it, it gives you a lot of different things to, to use as your judgment. And if there are projects that come before you that use these. Mitigation elements in spades, it should tell you something about whether or not that's compatible with everything else in the area that doesn't have it. Um. So for a glimpse of that, page sixty-five, which you have, um, there, it's one of the last three pages. It shows a conceptually municipal campus, which clearly illustrates the proximity of things as East Windsor sees them. Between things like schools, parking, roads, parking lots, et cetera, to residential areas and there. This is like the Colgate property, I think, out on depot, I think someone called it the reservoir property, where it's a big property. You look on that, you see that none of the buildings, none of the parking lots, none of the, the roadways. Are right up next to residential homes, there, it's often, it's a, it's a very large parcel, um, and it's off by itself. This project isn't that. Um, the mitigation measures that are the very thing by which to measure the appropriateness and fit of this project or lack thereof. Uh, with the town's growth standards and stated historic preservation goals, which we just heard a little bit about from the P O C D. Now, project can often meet the dimensional and detail requirements of a zoning runs known as the sort of letter of the law. But commissions like this are tasked with harder. Situation, which is exercising good judgment to determine the compliance with this intent. Of the zoning laws and the overall goals for keeping the town's heritage intact. And one would advise start thinking like a village, not a banquet hall or burger bar. Um, and that's what we were just talking about, the end of the last discussion, what are those? What, what are the parameters? What do you use to judge the fit of a project like this? And, and are the mitigation measures something that can turn that right off? And East Windsor is pretty specific on this, they have this ninety page document. Detailing all the guidelines, um, which is the P O C D, I won't go into too much more of that, because it's been talked about. And, but this project is akin to putting that school or municipal facility right up next to the. The residential area and the, the P O C D clearly shows that that's not what they want to have. Now, if we go through the five different issues in there, first one I picked is the site and the visual aspects of the project. Now, due to proximity of the neighbors, there's a need on. The east side of the project, I think it's been changed with fence now, but. We had an evenly spaced three hundred foot row with pines. The twenty-five feet on center, that, that's a straight line, twenty-five, you know, and so. I don't see that anywhere else in, in the village. On the west side, uh, to protect the, the, the sound and visual aspects coming from this project. There's the need of very well drawn up, professionally drawn up, there's a need for a six foot barn. Another fence, our providing is at two feet on center or whatever it is, and that's. That's because you've got a, a, a public event facility that's less than a hundred feet from residential properties. And his, his master's own words, she said at this last meeting, this is the kind of. Barrier you see like going along an eastern interstate highway to protect residences on the other side. So this particular facility is sort of like the interstate highway. The other one's creating the noise and the visual sound barrier, and they need that beautifully designed and beautifully documented and detailed. Berm and a visual barrier that goes along that side to protect Rich from seeing what's going on behind it. In this parking lot for, for eighty-eight cars, cut off luminaires are proposed. But we can always, we always, like, can see these lots from a long way away, you can, you, I've been down to scout hall and scout hall lights are on. Even with cut off luminaires, you know there's a parking lot in there, and you're driving up the road, you can see the glow. Um, I, I don't find this very historical or in keeping with the village vernacular in the scale, the design, or they use any of this. Uh, the site and visual berms in them. I look at sound, um. This project is gonna generate so much noise. That it requires a brand new pseudo barn. Now, make no mistake, they're not gonna renovate this barn, it's got no foundation, it's got, it does not have a continuous foundation. Got a dirt floor, they're gonna do all new walls, all new roof, all new windows, et cetera, so it's sort of a pseudo barn. Bankrupt facility and these high tech walls with an S T C rating of a hundred. Regular houses have between thirty-five and forty-five S T C ratings for their lawn. What other, what other structure anywhere around this? Or in East Windsor has a, a wall and S T C rating of a hundred, I mean, it just doesn't happen. Now. I think we've all heard, heard how difficult it, it can be to contain this noise without the sound wall. Uh, when you open the doors and you leave them open at night or when you can, um. Um. You know, when you can feel the thumping now, one thing we need to talk about the S T C, and this is one of those things where you can. Manipulate numbers, um, I'm very familiar with S T C ratings of walls, sound transmission coefficients. I know what they're for, I know how you achieve them, and they have done a great job with. With an S T C rating of, of, uh, one hundred, but. Um, S T Cs don't consider low frequency noises, that's not part of the testing. So we've all heard the car go down the road, the, the windows are all closed and they're all darkened up and you can hear the boom, 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 boom. It's not in an S T C rating, I don't know whether that's gonna come emanating out of the roof, because we don't know what that. Design is gonna be or through the sides, but I'm just saying. This is a facility proposed by Historic Society, which needs to have an S T C rating on their walls of a hundred. To keep the noise generated from this building inside. And it just, you know, I don't know, maybe Rich did that to his house last week, but I don't think he needs an S T C rating in it. Traffic, um, you guys require a traffic study anyway for a special permit, um, in section hundred. And while others have pointed out several flaws in the study. I'm just amazed that there is a use being proposed in a small village. The required forty-two page traffic study, I looked through all the pages, not much in there, it's all data and whatever, but. I, I mean, it just amazed me that that's not being put forward by a, a new business in town. In a business park, it's the historical society who needs a traffic study, and I know you need it anyway, but. There's some issues that, and one of these was the calculation that. Um, there was, it was gonna generate a certain number of trips and it sort of seemed like it was spread out during the day. When we all know it's gonna be concentrated within an hour when people get to their wedding and then an hour when they leave the, the wedding. And so adding those through the day, if you add them all at once during those peak hour times, it pretty much doubled the. Traffic in the area, I mean, you know, it's, it's not like it's gonna happen from nine in the morning until five o'clock and none of people show up for the wedding, they all get there at five o'clock. An hour before the wedding. So traffic just seems amazing that they require that at all. Drainage blows my mind, um. I live close by and I've done a lot of digging, helped with some of the people in my family, deep, deep excavation with excavators, my personal, you know, me. And the excavator, although they don't let me do that very often. Um, and I, I dug down in the soils in here, and there are not all bad draining soils in this area. And I can assure you that none of the other houses in Scantic Village require. A dozen catch basins, a couple thousand feet of engineered drainage pipe. And a ten thousand square foot retention pond, now I'm just guessing on that, because it's about the same footprint as the, the blue building in there. And I don't know how many gallons that is, it, um, keeps it in there all the time. Difference between a retention and detention, meaning the retention pond keeps it all the time, and the retention has the. Uh, the pipes that come in and out of it, and that sort of thing. Um, so that, that just blew my mind. I mean, I think the Nidlingers have a pool, but that's the closest big thing I can see, but none of them have retention pond. They don't have the giant drainage systems that, that you have there, and this is being proposed by the Historic Society, you have to remember that. Um. One of the, uh. I think we talked about this a little bit, I won't really go over it again, but the initial, um, drainage that they had. Very needleman, pointed out that goes down through the property up there, goes right into the, into the scantic and. Maybe now it'll have more chance to drain a little bit into the soils and use the retention pond, et cetera, but. I still find that it blows my mind that there is something that. Requires so much attention because what's going to be draining off of this property. Is gonna go into the Scantic River. And you need oil and, and, uh, gas separators in the, in the catch basin, so that doesn't go down there, and we all know it comes off the cars and eventually gets down there, but. I, I understand that, like I said, I, I, I've designed a lot of these things with civil engineers, they make sense for, for certain project. But this is a rural village, this is, this is Scantic, this is not the, the industrial park down there, well, well, not days. Um. Conservation is probably, um. The toughest one, I mean, that's where I stuck in the architectural of this thing and then. The compliance with the town's P O C D regarding, regarding the historic conservation and preservation of over space, we just heard a little bit about. Um. We can see from the town zoning map, um, this part right here, people have talked about this already, but. You know, this is all mixed stuff that's up in here, this is a lot of, of large areas, what we have right here is a donut. It's all residential donut and a small piece of agricultural, of agricultural land in here, and yeah, there's these five little. Uh, business zones which are meant to, to sort of define a village and, and what village business, not big business, village business. So this donut is what's, what's surrounding all of it, so it's not, it's not a business park that, that is there. If you have a parking lot for eighteen cars, eighty-eight cars, eighty-three, whatever it is, uh, last time somebody said. Um, gee, you sure you had a parking because you're parking in front of the dumpster and where the, where the fire trucks turn around and that sort of thing, and. The answer I clearly heard, I mean, it was. From Mister Yusuf, I think, said, well, if you want, we can add eighteen more parking space. That's not what I consider. In a rural historic village, a Scantic village, that, that projects will just add more, you want more parking spaces? We'll add some more pavement for you, we'll add more of this black area for you, because. We're the Historical Society, that just doesn't seem right to me. Um, so parking for eighty-three cars, an extensive paved circulation route in and around the site. Twelve and eighteen foot high parking lot lights, we cut off luminaires, ten thousand square foot retention pond, that's not open space. As Tony Needle pointed out. There are places around where it might be more in character, and maybe the drawl property. That's sent back off the road and, you know, maybe you can go back in there and create a little space back in there, like on the H sixty-five, the P O C D. Spread things out, not have it be near residential areas where the sound and some of the traffic can get in off the road and, and be away from other things. But not here. As for historic preservation, um, barns are a real, a real important part of the heritage of this town and an entire Connecticut River Valley. I'm an architect and when I came down here, one of the first things I asked for Christmas was a book on the tobacco barns. Because I think that the vernacular of a region, this is the tobacco barn. And this dirt floor, blue metal siding, indoor riding ring, pole barn construction. It was built within the last twenty, four, twenty-five or thirty years, I believe I heard that from somebody here, certainly not historic, and has no historic value whatsoever. And the scope of the work is to completely rebuild the whole barn with new roof. Uh, as I said before, undefined sound control, new high tech S T C sound deadening walls, new foundation and floors. And the result will be a brand new. And the result will be a brand new building with no historic value, no design conduction, but any of the barns. I don't think it'd be mistaken that for tobacco barn anytime soon. And. There's. No, no representation of, no cultural reference to. Or no even attempt to to work with the vernacular architecture of the village. It's kind of like putting lipstick on a pig when you kind of do something. Um, when you compare this with a venue like the Holcomb Farm in Granby. Where they've been farming for two hundred years. On three hundred and twelve acres. And they're on Simsbury, Simsbury Road or whatever the main drag red is. Um. They have an architecture significant structure over there, they've turned that into an event hosting facility, because that project makes sense. The location makes sense. This one just doesn't for the reasons we were talking about. Now, the main subjective question regarding the approval of this special permit is whether or not this project does fit into that surroundings. With the character and the bid and the, you know, the harmony and that sort of thing. And we find that the comprehensive presentation of these extensive mitigation measures to be that yardstick. And using this measure, the project fails miserably. In my humble opinion. So why on earth would the East Windsor Historical Society propose this? I I totally agree with the other people who said this, I think the historical society has done great things. I love the fact that they cleaned up the property, I love the fact that you guys can post those, I've been here. Their craft fairs and their uh, what is it, hit miss lung, one-lunger engine thing that they have up there, it's fantastic, people wandering around, townspeople. Doing things, enjoying themselves, I think that really makes sense. And the premise of this project, as I understood it, is to create an incoming generating entity, you kind of said this a little bit, sort of the same way. Um. Income generating entity that would be able to support the Historical Society property's expenses. In this case, through the rental fees of the event hosting facility. But in my humble opinion, what's really happening is that Historical Society will now take on the stewardship. Of a formal event hosting facility with brand-new, non-historical, million-dollar pseudo barn. Paid parking lot for eighty-three cars or eighty-five or eighty-eight. With its parking lot lighting system and elaborate drainage system, drainage structures and retention pond. And the maintenance of this formal, orderly, non-historic landscaping array, which is necessary for visual screening. Of this facility from the very very village it's supposed to be a part of. Have to put up a big screen that. So you don't see that from the village. I think the upkeep is gonna be heavily twice, if not ten times more than their their current expense budget, and I agree completely with. The calculation was made at the end, you take two million bucks and boy, that lasts you a long time. You know, but I, as I understand, the expense budget was somewhere around fifty to eighty thousand for Historical Society and. What, hundred thousand or more, I think would be great for that and. Why? Build a barn to do that. It 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 especially doesn't make sense when you realize that. Eighty percent or, and we talked about that, I haven't seen, just a few minutes ago, I saw the new proposed list of events. Um. Twenty-five out of thirty-one, which are pretty much the same ones that the attorney. Checked. Um, twenty-five out of those thirty-one of those proposed list events don't need an expensive building, a paved parking lot, parking lot lights. Drainage pond. Interstate-scale site sound barriers and an alcohol program. Just doesn't need that. So the the service site has successfully hosted many of these events already in the past, or have all happily attended. It's the ones that have the alcohol, the lights, the loud music and the traffic that need to be relocated somewhere else in appropriate surrounding area. And who's gonna perform the services for the upkeep, maintenance, repair and improvement? Whoever's doing it now for a small group of buildings and sheds. Will be making a fortune taking care of a bigger facility, so it's a little bit like the analogy, the stockbroker makes money when market goes up or down, they get money going either way. But simply, the very entity that is being proposed to pay for a small expense budget of the Historical Society's properties. Is gonna multiply. This very same budget exponentially by adding its own banquet facilities, mass expenses to this mix. So the concept of creating such a large facility for future generations to maintain. Is not in keeping with the future of Scantic villages outlined in the P O C D. While the rest of the village is made up of small historic individual properties. Here, someone will have to find the time and money to pay for, maintain and manage this new, more expensive. Property with its big gun mitigation tactics, who we've been talking about. There'll be maintenance, repair and improvements for the buildings, catch basins, getting them cleaned. Parking lot luminaires have to be replaced, snowblowing, electrical utility liability insurance, everything's gonna go way out. So I I would ask the question, if this is a quasi-public project. Where the townspeople could benefit from this. And there will be property taxes paid on this kind of property, which benefit the neighbors and the village district of Scantic. Then we can talk about a transparent expense budget and have the procurement. For those maintenance services and an open bid, low bid process. The for the public and approved by the same thing. So, but as for clothes, none of these benefits. None of this benefits the town and the local adjacent neighbors. Not even the penalty fees for a party venue renter who violates the rules. And goes beyond the timeframes with the loud music. Time clerk is uh, the, so that, those fees go to the. The the owners of the facility, not to the neighbors to help them. So the town clerk has told me that um. The tax base will shrink because they, I don't, this is a question I have to say right now, I can't be clear about this, but. My understanding is that this will not be paying, they're not be paying property taxes, that may be a very simple question to. But they don't pay private taxes right now, but I I know, I I hear two different things from the the town. At any rate, um. So there's a word for all this, what we're talking about is the spirit of this whole thing, it's called vernacular or vernacular architecture. And it's the physical presence of a village or of an area, village or an area. So what is it and how does it help to define the characteristics? So from Webster's Dictionary. All relating to being the common building style of a period or place. Vernacular architecture serves immediate local needs, is constrained by the materials available in a particular region. And reflects local traditions and cultural practices. This project is not in the vernacular of this village. So how do you measure this? Some of the metrics come from the dimensional balcony requirements of the zoning regulation. That's the easy part, the numbers part. The objective. The letter of the law, when asked at an earlier meeting, if the uh, the letter of the law is is much harder to. Uh, it's much harder to answer. Now, vernacular, vernacular architecture is really important to East Windsor. Our tobacco heritage and the farm environment is still a big part of who we are. We have plenty of regulations, guidelines and laws that are in place. For one reason, as we just said before, preserve it and to preserve our open space. The intent of the regulations, the subjective part of this evaluation. Um. Is much harder. By now, we're ultimately with the wording that we've heard from meetings past. And the regulations three oh five, four hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, the P O C D, conservation goals, mission, blah, blah, blah. And therefore, words and phrases like preservation of agricultural land. Preserving public health, safety and welfare, harmony with the area, the central characteristics of the neighborhood. Compatibility with community character, and this from the Historical Society, discover, procure and preserve. Whatever may relate to the civil, ecclesiastical and natural history of the town of East Windsor. That's okay. We want to have a village, a village feel, it's meant to be a village, not a town center. And the P O C D also talks about a scenic road路. They talk about architecture from the pre-seventies style, they talk about preserving open space. Not paved campus-style roads, a brand-new, out-of-scale banquet facility, parking lots and retention pond. So in other towns. Where the historic groups seek to preserve and conserve the historic aspects of the town, primarily through protecting the vernacular of a district. The neighborhood of the town. Is not what's happening here. Here we have a small group of people. All the women that I can see will benefit financially, not the town or the townspeople, the residents. And under this kind of cloak of the Historical Society, to initiate this master plan of a middle campus scale. Middle school campus scale development, not aimed at historic preservation. But to financial gain for the investors and imposed upon a small rural village that looks nothing like this project. I mean, you look from above and you say, you know, how many, how many houses in 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 Scantic Village have? Um, a retention pond. Uh, okay, none, uh, what do we call that? Well, that's that's bigger, that's different. Same thing with the visual and sound barriers, all these mitigation elements. And they don't exist in in Scantic Village and they're only gonna exist. To sort of protect the village from what's emanating from the Historical Society's. Situation, that just doesn't make sense to me. It should be im- apparent, but the need for the mitigation measures themselves, like the size and scale of the mitigation. And the huge burden of maintaining the mitigation is not in keeping with the character of this historic rural village. The fact that there is such overwhelming opposition out here. Near and from and far to the site, it evidence the local townspeople agree with this assessment. They're asking the board to deny the special permit application. As a large developer friend once told me, you just can't polish a turd. Um, that's sort of the end of that, but I do have some open questions, um. How is it possible to propose by the East Windsor Historical Society to obtain then improve an adjacent property for a current small village? Is the very thing that will make this village non-historic? Has the project gone before the Historic Preservation Commission? I thought there was one, but I think there's only two people I haven't met for two years, so I don't know. Um, I did ask about the tax status, there's different things that I've been told about that. And I would also ask that, have all these members of the commission actually gone out and visited the site and driven around and. Seen how close it is to all the different things, so. Um. That's concludes my uh. My presentation, so thank you very much, please go ahead.
My name is Phil Dogg, my brother was always one. I'm gonna make this mercifully brief.
Thank you.
I have five points to make. Point number one. We've all come to love the Historical Society. A number of comments to that effect tonight, good. User-friendly. Museum. Historically famed. An asset to the community. Point number two. Historical Society has other aspects besides that. They are a legal entity in the state of Connecticut, they are an LLC. They need to be a legal thing from time to time, that's fine. Point number three, things beginning to get interesting. The Historical Society is also. An official five oh one C three. Category entity in terms of the I R S. Are friends of the tax collection agency. They are a private, I think the word is development, it may be a little long-term, but they're private something. Follow one C three has many subcategories. As such. They can accept, can they do? Yeah. Tax-free donations for people who wish to make donations. Two years ago. Four nine ninety, that they have to file every year. Shows four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Donated to the society. By uh, the local automobile recycling company, I believe. There's money up. Okay. Now. Why does the society want more money? I've put a number of comments to that effect tonight. Why do I want more? I don't know. But the point to be made is. This is point number four, our society appears to be attempting to morph. From what they have been for so many, many, many years. Into something new. Namely, a commercial entity. Is that a wrong thing to do? No, but it certainly raises questions in my mind. Now. Point number five. I'm almost out of here. Point number five is. This commission has a large decision to make. The decision you're about to make has far-reaching implications. You could be tempted. To approve this in some heavily kaviotic fashion. You may say, well, you can only do it on certain weekends. You can only do it certain ways and so forth and so on. And if you take that line of thought. You're thinking that, okay, it's only open a little bit of the time. It's only here a little bit, it's only there a little bit. Point to be made is. If you approve it on that basis. All of that takes place. And all of the changes associated with that, that place. Changes are there twenty-four seven. The change is forever. Ask the people in the room, the ones that would be impacted by the changes. If they think these are positive changes to their neighborhood. Or negative changes to the neighborhood. Got a news flash for you, if you haven't seen that tonight already. The changes, this is subjective, if you live there, changes are felt to be negative. Not just negative, but heavily negative forever. It's a buzzword for this, it's called stigma. The stigma will last forever. If you approve this in any way, shape, form or fashion. At the end of the day, any of this gets approved at all. Society makes money. The neighborhood just to pay for it. The neighborhood gets stink. End of speech, thank you.
Sit so long for all these long figures. Retired two weeks ago. Uh, Abbot Stolls, uh, Nice Cemetery Road. And if I could, I'd like to use one little, um. Yeah, did you get it under the uh, blue run? Put that up there. Interesting, uh. You know, put this wonderful picture up, but where's the other half, Jay? Jay, where's the other half of this picture? My half. Everything you show here is is what was there in the, in the. The historical site that they cleaned up, I understand it, but the other side looked pretty clean to me. The other thing is that one little barn there. I donated money from that. To the historical site, and they moved it to my property. So I was always in favor of this whole project. Until they dug into it and got into it. More and more and more with people involved and realized this is just a money-making scheme for certain people. It it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong. Uh, and also, the other thing is, I'm the guy. On the other side of the pond there. Uh, and you notice they put up a long fence all the way along my property line, that's my punishment for switching sides. So a long time ago, they said, you want a fence? I said, no, so they put these nice posts there where I put lights out of all of the little reflector lights. So it kind of looks all the way down, so, but now they want to put a fence up to punish me, six-foot-high fence. The house they can improve the. View and the whole atmosphere of the neighborhood when you put up a six-foot-high black fence. That's they like black. So that's my one point on that. I called my real estate agent yesterday, she's the number one real estate agent in Hartford, Canada, her name is Lynn Graff. I said, Lynn, with knowing what I told you about this change. Would you recommend I bought that house twenty-five years ago? She's already nuts. Right? Never would you buy that if you knew this is going on. Because we looked over, we saw this wonderful pastoral. Uh. Environment with horses and everything else, and it's wonderful. And that's why we bought the property. By the way, uh, Mister Burnham. Dan, John Byrne, their wives, were in the building when I bought the house. They're very familiar with me and this whole situation, they treated me very well for two years. And then when I switched sides, I got thrown out of the club, but uh, and and I understand that since I switched sides. I always thought these other people were the enemy, but then I saw what they're up against and I realized, this is just a hundred percent real. I've had ten homes that all around the United States. Been forty years in management. And so I've lived in a lot of different places. This reminds me what they did to New Britain. Right? You put seventy-two through New Britain, ruined the town. You put eighty-four through Hartford, ruined the town, why? You cut it right in half. This is gonna cut the whole thing in half and it's just gonna ruin the whole rural environment. And 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 I I think that part of it's very wrong. Uh, I wish Mister Holden were here, maybe we could ask him a few questions as to when he put some of these pipes in. In the recent, some of the things are, if some of these things are fairly recent, they would tell you they're they're thirty years old, they're not thirty years old, some of this stuff is pretty new. Especially the one, if you look on the side of my pond there, it's twenty-seven feet into my property. And to get there, nobody seems to know. Right? So uh. That, and let's see if I have one other point, I think. That, and let's see if I have one other point, I think the punch point was thing, I was asked one time, would I rather see ten homes there? Than, uh, what they're doing, I'd rather see the ten homes there. It would be fine, you know, at least they'll be paying taxes, thank you very much.
Uh, Richard B Van one twenty-one, Scantic Road. I have pictures going on, it's time, have you guys look at? This is about the road conditions that everybody's saying it's so. This is what happened. Down Phelps Road, at the shop on the stop sign. Had a car. This is, nobody stops where I live. We're gonna have the signs change, just slow and go. As a tractor trailer, the U-turn, and the church diamond is. That's what they did to the property in front of my house and the church property across the street. This is why they're saying that there are no problems with conditions with cars on these streets. I mow my lawn. I get people, give me a finger, because I'm near the road. Like, I'm not supposed to be taking care of my property, they own the road. You blow the sand out of the grass, cars come out, they swear at you. Pulling your driveway. They give you the finger, blow the horn, they want to fight you out the street. This is what we deal with, where we live. They want to put more traffic on the road. They want to put people that drink and kill innocent people. That upsets me. Every time they, there's an accident on Route Five, they rotate them coming by our place, which everybody knows. Mahoney Drive, there should be four stop signs there. These cars come down, I, I can count the accidents, they say there are never any accidents over there, always accidents. In front of the church, that intersection, nobody stops, accidents. They want to put more cars on the road. Until the town straightens it out. Then maybe we can do something. But besides that. So, the last time I was here, I spoke to you guys about having a. A problem with water, like with some pipe, remember? Last week, I get a call from the DOT. I was threatened by them. That they wanted access to the pipe. Going from across the street, under Town Road. State Road, Town Road, to my property. She says, because John Burnham, I wouldn't let him blow it out, Holman was there to blow it out. When my wife approached him, which I told you, he had a consolation, call your lawyer. Call the lawyer, no pipe on my property. Wouldn't let him blow it out. So what's he doing for revenge? He calls DOT on me. So she mentions Larry, Lenny, I mean, right down the maintenance building, I confront him about it. Starts barking at first. How did the DOT get my cell number? John's the only one that knows it. So this is a revenge he's doing to me. Because I'm not his friend no more, I don't cut the property for him no more. I used to cut all the grass for him, because I was doing it for free. So I went down, I talked to Lenny, Lenny says, oh, I can't believe I got someone under the bus, well, Holman did. He goes, I, I said, you, your name came up, not John Burnham, your name. He said, well, I'm gonna get to the bottom of this, I'm gonna call. Uh, Oney, her name was. I says, are you threatening me? He says, no, I'm not threatening you, I said, you're threatening me, you're telling me if the water recedes over your road. I'm gonna be held liable for it. That's a threat. So I called my attorney, and I told him what's going on. He says, right, right, see what they does, so I go back down, I waited for Lenny. To see what, how he was gonna take care of it. No call, no phone call, no phone call, bad, nothing. I go down there. Then I told the girl down there, the secretary, I says, have him call me. He did. He said, I said, did you call Oney or John? Well, kinda didn't, maybe, I don't know, no straight answer. Okay, friend of a friend, I guess. Okay, whatever. If they want to do it legal, we'll do it legal. He's telling me, in my eyes, with the town, there's no pipe coming from across that road. No, not at all, I called my lawyer, he says it's not on your deed. There's, nobody owns a pipe, there's no pipe. The area across the street's flooding over. That's why they want to blow the line up, they think the plug is on my property. They're not coming on my property, I own the property, he says, the farmers own the pipe. Farmers are dead and gone. Nobody owns that pipe, now John says, he owns a pipe, call your lawyer. John don't win again. But what happens? Gets the DOT on me. Now I'm mad. I'm upset. No need for it. So if this is the game he wants to play, we'll play, like he said, football, we'll do football. But it's gotta stop. He don't own this town, all these people in this room own it, we're the taxpayers, not John. I'm the new chief in town now. It's gotta start with John. Because you don't do it his way, he gets mad at you. It's gotta stop. Now, you got, want proof? I got more tools for you. More pictures. I called them. That's my toilet. I'm gonna talk about this one. Please, I'm a nice guy. I'll give you a world, I'll give you a shirt off my back, when this happens. I'm sorry. They were doing work in the back of the building. My mother-in-law called me, thought we were having an earthquake. What the hell is going on? So I called John. I said, John, John, what the hell is going on back there? He says, oh, we're just doing, putting the driveway in. I saw you putting driveway in, huh? I said, well, my mother-in-law, the whole house is shaking. I said, what the hell, well, don't worry about it, it's just a roller. A machine, big commercial roller, like they use on the highways. I said, well, he says, well, I'll put a stop to it. I said, all right, hope so, my mother-in-law thinks it's an earthquake. So. He says, all right, he put a stop to it. Couple weeks later, you see the pictures. Yeah, the dates are on the calendar, when I text them, when I call them. And those filters are from my well. That's what's coming out of my well. After he got done doing what he did. Fifteen, sixteen years I lived there, never had a problem, the only problem I had was sulfur smell. I called them, oh geez, let me come over it, let me take a look at it, I give them a filter, just like what you're looking at, this has been going on. Since they did this driveway, I'm still dealing with it, the last meeting we had, I got home that night, had no water pressure. What you're looking at, that's it. So, I called them, so, well, let me take a look at it. He comes over, I give him a filter, well, let me talk to my guy about it, okay, I give him the shot, do it. This guy comes over, called Connecticut Valley Well or something. Don't know myself, okay. Way back, let him do his job, I don't know what he does. Yeah, I was there, he was in the yard. They pulled the pump, changed some black stuff on it, dropped it. Says, I'll get back to you on my results, okay, I waited. He called me one day. And he says to me, he says, well. The damage you got done is not from them, what they did in the back. I says, how can you know that? He says, because what's being done, what they did back, so he started kicking his head, I says, oh, I'm not stupid. Maybe they cracked a vein in the earth, where all that pounded. And that's surface mud going down into the, the well. I mean, common sense, don't you? Sixteen, fifteen years lived there, not a problem, ever. So. Guy says, no, no, I doubt it, all right, so he does this thing. He gives me the, he gives me the, uh, he calls me, he gives me the results. I said, okay, I need that writing. He said, what? I said, I need it in writing, as a professional, accompany, give me a report of what your findings are. He says, oh, that's gonna take one, two, two hours, no, 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 just like that, what do you mean, no, no, I own my own business. I do quotes, my quotes takes five to six hours. That's our job, that's what we do. And then he says to me, well, I just beg for you. No, not in this lifetime, he says to me, I said, oh, really, okay. So ten minutes later, John calls me, I pick my cell phone up, John. So, what'd you find out, Rich? I said, I don't know, you tell me, John. Oh, I'm sorry, let's go back, the guy says, before he hung up, he says, oh, by the way, I'm not in Larry's pocket. That's what he said to me. I said, who in hell is Larry? He goes, come on, Rich, you know who Larry is. I said, have a nice day, then John calls me. And John says, so how did it go? I said, you tell me, John, it's a professional, I can't go out there professional. So now I gotta have my well, I gotta have a new well, my well, matter of fact, is in the backyard. Where the fence is, the property line, that's where my well is, it's not in the front like everybody else's house, Mrs. Ford had to put in the backyard. So now I gotta pay to have a well re-dug and put in the front, because I can't get rid of this problem, I already talked to a plumber and everything, he says. No, he said, there was a vein cracked in the earth, that's why you're getting what you're getting. So, now just think, when I do all this work back there. I'm never gonna have clean water. It's gonna be all mud. Solid mud. They don't even have a clue what they're doing, the damage in the earth. To see that well like that, you see the pictures. And look at my toilet. It's worse than the tank than what goes down the pipe. My mother-in-law, she's an older lady, she needs a clean water, to bathe. We don't drink the water, we drink bottled water like you drink it.
I don't either, my water's terrible.
Our water is better than city water. So I just want to tell you what I'm going through as a neighbor, and this concerns me. I didn't buy the house, I mean, and I'll tell you, like they said. Dave Tyler had the place, yeah, it wasn't Dave though, it was his dependent, his work staff. He lived in, in Coventry, he used to bring all his crap over there. When I first looked in my home, my wife looked out the window and she went, oh, I love the home, I love it, has men law, everything. So I said, all right, you like it? Yeah, she says, but look, look, look out the kitchen window, what do you say? I said, it's a horse trailer, there's toilet bowls hanging on, chairs. Raccoons are running around, I said, I'll take care of them. I said, you like the house? That's nothing, the town will take care of that. I went down to the town, the girl that was in charge, you don't work though, no more here. He says, throw it out, and we'll put you in the file, okay, I listened, I did it. Second time, trailer's still there. Yeah, signing off, what do you do over here again? Okay, again, again, five times, now I'm upset, now I tell her, look at. If you can't do your job, I'll do it for you, and I won't even charge the dog. I says, I went over and talked to Dave Tyler, you know what he told me? He said, yeah, but he's, he's, I'm getting rent off now, if I say something, he might leave me. You're the owner of the property. You have to say it, not your, not your client, or your tenant, whatever it is. And so, I finally went down, I put a threat on the town, and they had it pulled out of there. Then the guy used to have his kid sleep in a, in a horse trailer. So, yeah, thank God, it's gone, but you know what, it was quiet there, no noise at all, no noise at all, loved it. But I got rid of the trailer. Now let's hopefully get rid of a couple other things, but you see what's going on, so I appreciate it, thank you very much.
This is Gail, we have one there, from one one seven Scantic Road, and I just wondered, there were a number of letters. I, um, that I know that sent in, are those gonna be able to be read out loud? Will be acknowledged, all the commissioners have received copies of those letters?
All right, because I do know some people ask for them to be read out loud, but is that something you don't usually do?
No, I'm not gonna read the letters out loud, they, they've, they've received copies of all of them, we have one submission here that they will. Also get copies of. That they will acknowledge them into the record.
These will be available on the website.
They already are, all right, everything except for the one we got tonight is online.
Well, can I just finish one more thing? I did have one thing that I wanted to mention, um. I did take a couple pictures, um, because one of the big solutions that. Has come up to make our, you know, life and yard. Possibly normal is this berm. Solution, and what I just wanted to share was some pictures. Of some past berms that were. Done in town. This is near the solar. East Road, two years old, there's a couple pictures of those, and then there's some other pictures, I'll explain them. So those are pretty dead as a door nail, and I'm sure no one's gonna replace them, because. There's just no, I mean, the town doesn't have the resources to go. Chasing after companies. To try to replace what they put in, so the first. One, two, three, are. Dead trees near the solar plant. So that solution didn't work out so good, don't think that they grow much longer. They're dead, so they're not gonna grow any larger. The next one. The next one, two, three, four. Is a berm solution on Phelps Road. So a few years back, this was a pretty effective solution. But as you see, time goes by, there's big holes, gaps. It's not really maintained. Um you can maybe stick some little trees in it, but and you'll see. Um the state has issues with certain kinds of fir trees now. Bugs, disease, or killing them. I can't remember the name, but. So that was, I just wanted to see how these solutions are very effective. And the last solution is at the rez town. So. There's three of those. This to the fence that was, um. Well, the solution was bushes in front of the fence. So the bushes are long gone. They probably died and got pulled out. Um and this, I think, is the fence belonging to the property owner. Um and is not maintained. But the solution of these bushes, putting bushes in places. Isn't really that effective. Also, um someone pointed out to me over on. Skinner Road, the houses, when that softball field. Was first put in, there was a, like, a bazillion trees. I I don't think he said five hundred or fifty. The whole thing was treated. Uh you couldn't even see the houses from down on the rez, and they couldn't see into the baseball or the softball field, I guess it is, whatever. Those trees, they just recently ripped them all down. Um for whatever reason, I don't know if they were safe or whatever, but now when you drive into the rez, you can see the back. Side of every one of those houses up on Skinner. So I just wanted to give some examples of how some of these mitigation examples, long term, aren't really effective.
Thank you.
Trying quite a bit to absorb tonight here. I don't have any pictures or any folders or any files or anything like that to give off. I'm talking on behalf of, I understand somebody says like, um, how much money does a nonprofit have to raise? Much as they can. We've all learned from COVID. Churches went out of business. I know for a fact nonprofits went out of business and the historical societies went out of business. You can't be open to the public. You're not getting money in. That's what I'm not, that's what a historical society does. They bring people in to learn about the history of the town. They promote educational programs. The better they can do it, the better people learn about the town, the more they preserve the history, the more they talk about it. The more the town has people coming in because of the history of the town. This facility would be used by many different nonprofits, not in town, out of town too. I know we'll try three or four myself that I'm a member of. We love to do banquet, not banquets, but seminars. Or lectures, or have authors come in and talk about the town. Now, as for nonprofits. I've been a president of a nonprofit for like four years. I just started a nonprofit, me and my wife, this year. You need to raise a lot more money than you think. Something could happen where you can't open like COVID. I go to auctions. And I see that stuff from historical societies are being sold at auctions. When they close down because they're a nonprofit, that has to be distributed to other nonprofits. Won't be in town. So if they had to close down all your history of your town. Get sent out somewhere else in some other town. You can't keep it. That's the way nonprofits work. So these are important things to keep going. If you think you need fifty thousand dollars a year, you better raise seventy or eighty, just for a buffer sum. And you keep raising and raising and raising. There is no too much money for a nonprofit. The more you raise, the more adventure can do. The more you have an overhead, it pays something half. For me, I think this is a good idea. I grew up in this town with you. I think like, like I said. I'm not looking at it as a rental for. Banquets or something like that. Will it ever be used for that? Probably I can help. Do you ever have a wedding reception there? I don't know. I know that I could have events there to promote history of the towns, the ranges, different towns. Your cemeteries in the pound, their history of the. The stone carvers, where the stones came from, what they mean to people in town. That's what I see the use of it. I mean, I don't know how you guys ever. Can even take all this information in and make the votes, but that's up to you. And so I have to say, like you live there. Anyone else?
Hi, Angela Beadon, one twenty one Scantic Road. I just wanna add, um my husband already did mention to you, but I just wanna make it clear. Uh Nancy did say that uh the Historical Society keeps the island and adjoining property maintained well manicured. Well, I don't know that she had mentioned that my husband has been doing that for two to three years. He's been doing it volunteer. Without paying for gas, not charging for gas. For wearing here on his lawn equipment, and he was doing the island for a while, but he had to stop because the car almost hit him, and he says, I can't do that anymore. We just did. The property on the side of us. So I just want you to know that we are in support of the historic society. We do like our community, and we do try to do our best. But and he is the one that was maintaining it. And I said, Rich, you have so much to do already. You work a full-time job. He said, oh, you do our property, and you're doing your property. But we're doing it because we believe in our community and we wanted to support the historic society, and I just don't see them doing the same thing for us. I thank you for your time.
My name is Firma Shaw. I live in Melrose. Um, I don't live. I don't live near the facility, but I'm here to support my fellow citizens to do with near the facility because, um. Although I think it's a fantastic idea, I think, um, it's something the town should really use. Um in my opinion, um I don't think it's. Appropriate for the area. I don't think it's good enough to the, um, ethnic sections. They could take their plan and move the whole building and the whole. Idea to another section of town, a little bit more industrial, a bit more fortunately, I think that would be great. Um but where it is situated, I don't think it's so appropriate for that area. Like, like the building was already approved. The building's been there for a while. There's not much to say, you know. People can really stick on the building. It's already been approved. Everybody, you know. Who was sitting in your seats agreed to it at the time. So, um, I don't feel as much we can say about the, the building, but the, um. The traffic it will bring, the type of traffic it will bring during certain events. Um the drainage issue is really concerning me. Um but one thing I think that Historical Society has thoroughly missed on. Um to make money off the area with the, the main reason they're doing this is, um, something that their representative, um, mentioned numerous times. The last time I watched the meeting online, he brought up three times. That the Historical Society has a great asset to the property, which is, uh, Scantic River Frontage. Um I think that's an asset to the property that they're not taking advantage of. Um if they had something like a nature center there, um. Some type of attraction like that, it wouldn't bring as much traffic. That would bring much more passive activity to the area. I think that would be a better community usage. And I think it'd be more supported by people in the area. It brings large crowds, which is one of the main concerns also. And I think it'd be an asset to the entire community, um and I think it would make them money also. Um. I had spoken with people from the Autobahn Society, from the Appalachian Trail Club. Um different nature organizations, um and they said they would be interested in having a satellite, um, facility. They would be interested in the facility where they have whole classes, have interrupts, um. I think they're missing a great opportunity. They, they, how is it, as an asset to the property, having this large frontage on the river. Um and the location, the rural location, well, I think you're. Not using your assets to invest in your priority. Um trying to change the, um. The flow of the neighborhood, trying to change the section of town. Do something, I, I really don't think it's fitting in that area. Um and I also am speaking against this because. I live in Melrose, and if they wanted to build something like that, um on farm land near me, um I live across from Kim Meyer's farm. I live right down the street from farms on, um. In the Melrose Road. Um if they tried to build something like that near me, I would hope everybody here would come and stand up for me and say, not my ability either. Um it's just the wrong affection of town for it. Um and I think if you do approve this project, um, I hope you will, but if you do approve this project. Um I think it's very, very, very important that everybody realize it will be precedent-setting for the rest of town. Um and it's a precedent that I don't think is in our citizen's best interest. I don't think it's in certain villages' best interest. Um and I, I think that's. The second most important reason I'm here, because if it does get approved, it's gonna be precedent-setting for the town. And I think a little bit more of these thought and work put into the, um. Master plan for the town should be adhered to. I, I don't think this, um. In this section of town really appears to that. Again, if it was in another section of town, I'd be saying, please, I'll give it your blessing, but. Because of where it's located, you know, it's like they say in real estate, location, location, location. It's, in my opinion, just the wrong locations. And I don't wanna see, um, precedent set for the town where you can put some, you know, location like that, um. And especially because I have locations like that all around me. I, you know, I. Don't really appreciate as much as other people do in town, living in a farm area. Because my water's polluted from farm chemicals, farm pesticides, um. And we've got to have the whole bill for that, uh, you know, other polluters in town are helping to tap to control their pollution from cradle grave. And the farmers in the town haven't. Um there's a lot, uh, people in town that have to, uh, have special protection water, can't even use their water, don't even wanna bathe in their water. Um we spend thousands of dollars every year to, you know, um. Uh have clean water in their house available for themselves and their families. Um so I, I don't really appreciate the farming community so much, but I do appreciate. The residential aspect of it not being a commercial, um. Laying area, commercial property, laying area, commercial facility, laying area. Um I have a traumatic brain injury, and I really appreciate my peace and quiet. I really appreciate, um. The area of town that I'm in, even though I'm right off of one forty, it's a fairly quiet area. And again, that was gonna move into my area. I don't know what my bond would be half a mile away, a mile away. I would hope that my neighbors would all come out and support me also and saying, no, um, and, you know, try to. Get a defeat at this meeting. Um I appreciate all your time. I appreciate all your effort. This is a very long dialogue about this. Um and I'll just wait for your answer whenever that comes. Thank you.
Name's Mike Doherty, five Cemetery Road. Now they've been addressing all these berms and everything, but if you look at the maps. My house, the foundation of my house is like, if you put a razor on the sill plate. It's. Level with Rich's roof. So they put up a six-foot fence in the back, and any noise, it just go right at my house if my house is so hot. And that's one thing, and you guys said you'd be down to check things out. Now, you looked at that pipe they're complaining about. I've been there for forty years. It was a strain before that. Now, I was licensed contractor for over fifteen years. And you gotta have site plans. And everything, zoning plans to put pipe in. They just come in, they connected pipe. And it's right, the only place where it was piped is where the driveway was. It ran all the time. Then they cut all the soil. So at the end of my yard, it's a twelve-inch drop. So two years ago, I used to have thirty by eighteen garden in the back. I had to move all that because it's a swamp now. With all the water that comes from the front of that building goes straight down. And then they came in with, Hope came in with the D eight and. There's, I'd say three hundred yards of topsoil on the side of that building. So they took everything off. My side and Rich's side, just graded all down. And. To be honest with you, that was all the road you saw, because Dave never fertile, you know, put on any, was just horses that were there, and his beef cow. You know, so it's not toxic soil or anything, and they just plowed it all up. And, you know, as far as trade, I'd be really pissed if I was bought, you know, everybody's gonna be going right through there, but. Just, you know, they cut my driveway and I used to have this sick little piece of. Uh coal right at the front that the Morelles put in in like the forties. And they mowed that all down, cut four trees. I come outside, go, what are you doing? Oh, you're gonna love it. And every time he said something, John just say, just sell me the damn house then. And then he bought the church property. The next day, that was like a thirty-foot buffer. I mean, it's a tie, a wind farm now. He cut all the trees. At his lot across the way, and he's worried about drainage. Well, we have trees there, you know, now all the silk plugs his drainpipe. Cut down over a hundred trees there, and some of that, that's a state road. So that's fifteen feet of evening, and he just goes in and cuts every tree down. So it's like a wind farm. Then all the ones in between the church, and you're talking about the sort of preservation. I, my mother looked at that one, kind of, that was the second oldest beach tree in the state of Connecticut. They just mowed it down and grounded. You know, if it's something significant, you think you might wanna save a little of it, you know? And mowed all that down, and then all the trees on the side of the barn, all the way to the river, they cut down. I mean, they came out. There was at least eight tractor trailers just of stalks that they hauled out of there. And, you know, nobody knew anything about that. I don't know if you guys, like the last barn. The, if you're going down the driveway, the last one to the right. They cut storage unit doors into the whole side of barn. So for Bud's house, if he looks at that part to the right, there's all huge padlocks on it, and they're all, you know, storage units. That's not farm integrity. You know? It's just, you know. And I, the one question I have for everybody is, if it's a nonprofit, why are, you know, they've already got at least five hundred grand or six hundred grand. Without even buying the property of the stuff they've done already. So as a nonprofit. You know, federal and state, you know, they, anybody that's on the board isn't even allowed to. Uh get a profit. Off this project. So I'm wondering why it's going on. If you're on the board, you cannot collect a paycheck off the nonprofit. You can't, you can get paid to be on the board, but you can't collect a salary, you know, for all the events. Well, I just checked it all out, you know, I read a couple of buildings lightly and went on the internet, and that's what they say. If you're on the board, could not fill a profit. So I don't know. But that's the only things I really wanna address. And another question was. If this thing goes on and they have a wedding. Who is gonna stop these people from drinking? Because once people start drinking, I've been, I've worked security at a lot of events. I used to work for Bill Graham Productions, fucking Rolling Stones. Dead shows, World Cup Soccer and stuff. And if somebody's drunk. Basically, we were taught how to throw it down, but you can't argue with a drunk. You know, it's like, we're not drinking too much. So you're gonna call East ones are cops? Well, then that guy is gonna be doing donuts in that ride, and, you know, give it to the banker, throw bottles, and take it off. I've seen it all kinds of stuff, you know? And I'm glad you brought up that about the car and bike shows, because. Somebody can do a bike or trailer at ten o'clock and say, there's too many people already. It's gonna get ugly. You know? But that's about it that I wanted to address, you know? So thanks for your time.
Hello, my name's Paul Brew, and I live at sixteen Little Road. When I first saw all the signs popping up. And I didn't know anything or much about, about what was going on. I've been to the Historical Society, to the little Scantic Village, and it's really nice. I commend the work that has been done to. Get rid of flights. I think we all drive around our town. We'd say, I wish that yard was a little cleaner, that yard. Um there's actually a gentleman, I live on Wall Road, and there's a gentleman I walked. Um kind of that big circle cemetery and everything, in fact, that helps. I do a lot of photography on those, on those streets. And there's a gentleman who actually rides his bicycle. Picking up trash. I'm sure somebody probably knows who he is. Um. But when I saw the signs come up, I started to ask the question, where's the benefit to me? How do I benefit by this facility being? Put into place? I think economic development in a town can benefit the town. But it doesn't have to benefit, and I, when I use the word me, I think that's. All of these me's are out here asking that same question. Um is it true that? This group is not gonna have to pay taxes? But they are going to need police and fire. And medical. And some of the services of the town. I don't see that as a. I don't see that as a benefit to me. Uh, they talked about the mitigation of the height of the hole, the lights in the holes, that you're not going to be able to see maybe the, 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 the streetlights in the parking lot. Light pollution happens up. And at night, we're going to see it. There will be light pollution in that area. There will be noise pollution in that area. I hate coming up from the high school up to that stop sign because it's not a ninety degree stop. And those of us that have lived in the town for over twenty-five years, we were thankful when they finally cut those bushes down. Now you're going to have eighty seven lot cars, buses, trucks, whatever, who don't know our place. Accidents are going to increase there. They just are. That's a dangerous intersection. We have people who walk when it's not twenty degrees out. I'm one of them. But we have people who walk, we have cyclists, we have people walking their dogs. I still have to be careful now. And now you're asking to increase the traffic in this area? I don't see it benefiting me, the collective me. Millions are being invested in this product, project. How many people are they going to have to get to be there to get their return on investment? I'm looking at this project and I don't even know if I want to invest in it because the amount of work I would have to do to actually make it pull off. How's this going to benefit me? They are asking you to take an area that was zoned for a certain purpose in mind. It's an agricultural residential area. And they're asking you to turn it into a commercial little mini microcosm. That's the square, the square peg in the round hole. I think it is, that is a great idea. But it is definitely not in the right place. It's not in the right place at all. We have plenty of places, plenty of places that are acres that are zoned industrial that we are not taking advantage of. Let's take our collective resources. Let's take a lot of smart people and figure out how to make money, bring in tax dollars and help the economic development of our town grow while keeping our quality of life. I think that early on in the, early on in the meeting too, we did a lot of talk about property values. And I definitely agree with you. There's no empirical proof that the property value is going to go up or down. You can, you, you, that's a real subjective call. But I think based upon all of the information that's been told here today, that my quality of life in an area that I walk by every day will not be improved. I have not seen a single statement made that says my life, my neighbor's life, the collective me, that we're going to save tax dollars. No, it's going to go up. I don't see it helping me. And I stand here for all of the me saying, please, don't accept this.
So Donna Bruin sixteen Woolham. Um, I want to know who from the Historical Society is here? Is there anybody here? I, I just want to let you know because nobody checked in on me after I had my uh head injury. I am still healing from your ice cream social. And I can only imagine what kind of events that this facility is going to offer. Thank you.
Is there anyone online uh who would like to speak on this?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Is there somebody at the podium that's speaking or?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Michael Chapatelli, forty-two Skinner Road. Sorry that I cannot be there to speak in person. I'll try to keep this short. While the proposed special use permit that is before you has little effect on my quality of life, I thought I would offer the commission a unique perspective on what the residents in the proximity of the Historical Society can expect if this special use permit is granted. For those of you that may not know, more than five hundred feet of my property are buts a town owned and run event facility, otherwise known as the Reservoir Road Park. Jay mentioned this site earlier in his presentation. I have lived next to this event facility for more than fifty years. With the exception of war reenactments, I think that park, I think this park over the years has hosted just about every event being proposed by the Historical Society. And then so I can tell you from experience that approval of the application that is before you unquestionably adversely affect the taxpaying residents that live in proximity to this facility. A butters to this facility will be affected by air pollution, light pollution, litter and noise. In addition to the site lighting being proposed, butters can expect headlights, spotlights, dance lights, sometimes police lights, and yes, even flashlights shining in their windows. They can expect to be awakened on some mornings by the corridors of anxious event planners arriving to set up the day's props and then testing and checking sound systems over and over. They can expect the obvious event noise. They can expect loud music, some of which will rattle dishes in their cupboards and the glass in their historic windows. They can expect late night shouting, sometimes swearing, banging of car doors and screeching of wheels as some cars exit the facility. They can also expect public urination as some event attendees realize the length of their drive home. The applicant before you has gone great lengths to mitigate some of the noise and lighting concerns with plantings and a soil berm. I can attest to those efforts and they're essentially meaningless. As can be witnessed at other sites in town where plantings have been approved by this commission, there are no guarantees that the proposed plantings will grow. And if they do, there are no guarantees that those plantings will be properly maintained and remain disease free. How many years will it take before the proposed plantings provide any useful buffer for the abutting owners who live some within eighty feet of the proposed facility? What assurances do a butters have that twenty years from now, a town tree ward or even Historical Society themselves won't decide that they, that those plantings are no longer wanted? Or that they have become some sort of danger? That is exactly what happened along the eleven property lines that abut the event facility that I live next to. When the town decided to remove the five hundred plus white pines and spruce trees that provided a noise, privacy and lighting buffer for the abutting residents. The town has now left those eleven property owners to plant, pay for and maintain their own plantings on their own property. If it happened at a town park, it can certainly happen at the Town Historical Society site. In closing, it's easy for an applicant to come before you with the best of plans and intentions. Lots of promises have been made. I'm before you to attest what will be reality. My wife and I made the decision almost twenty years ago to renovate and invest in our property and in this town. Despite living next to a town owned park and event facility. It was a decision that we had come to greatly regret, but it was our decision. We never dreamed that the privacy and quality of life that we had come to take for granted would be so callously taken from us. The residents of Scannick have also made decisions to invest in their property and in this town. The difference is, they made their decisions based on a neighborhood that didn't include an event facility. I'm asking this commission, don't make a that bad decision for the taxpaying residents of Scannick. I can assure you, the proposed changes in addition of an event facility will not be in harm with the current Scannick neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. And if any of the board members would like to see what it's like to live hundreds of feet from an event facility, feel free to reach out. I'll be happy to provide in a butters perspective. Thank you.
Hey, is there anyone else online that'd like to make a comment? Okay, Snow B.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Morel. I live at fourteen Cemetery Road. I am east of this facility that's being proposed. I'm concerned not only for myself, but by adjoining neighbors on the east side. Not all of us have the opportunity to mitigate some of the issues that are going to be brought up and, and be part of this facility if it goes forward. I ca- I can leave my house. I can, I'm mobile. There are people in the neighborhood that can't, that will be affected because they're going to lose the enjoyment of their property. I, when I worked, I was a property manager and I managed a community that was along the um Connecticut River. They were affected by the noise pollution of a event facility, which was a cafe on the other side of the river at the uh Windsor line where it comes into East Windsor. There was nothing they could do. Um, you could hear the reverberation all the way down the river till late at night. They lost their quality of life. They were disturbed. They couldn't even go to bed early. Um, is that going to happen here? Maybe not to that same extent. Um, where we live in Scannick, you can even hear the train whistle coming down from uh the M track train. Um, noise, noise carries. And I'm concerned about that um affecting the quality of life. And I support everyone else who has made a statement here going forward. Please consider our quality of life. Thank you.
Anyone else online? Okay, yeah, another person would like to speak in the audience. Go ahead.
I think the town needs to start considering every time they give these contractors permission for pencil sewer line in with the ramifications the town is. Because down there, everybody, I don't know how long this pencil line is going to be, but everybody on that street that pencil line is going into, there's not going to be the tie into city sewers. And the town's doing this all over the place. They did it on Broadbrook Road, going down for chemists, uh little, was it village of metals there, you voted for it back in twenty ten through the W P C A. Every time this happens, now the town is handcuffed, the people are handcuffed that live on these streets. When their septic systems fail, they can't tie in any sewer lines. But the town continues to let these pencil lines be put in. You're handcuffing yourself, your expansion to town, the construction tours of the, of the community. You, you gotta stop the pencil line. Okay, I don't care if it costs them a million dollars to pencil line or ten million dollars for a proper sewer system, then they need to put the proper sewer system in. It's not fair to the people on that street. If they ever have a problem with their septic, they can't tie in. It's a pressurized system. You can't tie into it. Everybody on Depot Street thought they could tie into it and Ken was, Ken was doing his construction. They're all happy for it. And that's not the case. You cannot tie into a pencil line system. It's under pressure. Those towns really needs to start considering all these contractors that want to put pencil lines, sewer systems in, not the pumping stations. Because it's, it's going to handcuff you in the long run. Um, I guess that's it, except one other thing. I was on Zoom last time. Then there seemed to be a question as far as buffering, eight feet, a hundred feet, and I couldn't hear it back there. And they said it was a typo, they assumed it was a typo. Is it a typo or is it eighty feet, a hundred feet, or it goes back to you guys for fifty or a hundred? Thank you.
Do you have something different to add, Mike?
I'm probably not going to make too many friends saying this, but um it's been a long continuations on, from both parties about other people having a hand in um this facility. An out of town special interest, they've been labeled. And I was wondering if anybody would want to speak to that point. Who is out of town special interest is or?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It keeps being insinuated that it, that this facility is tied to an out of town special interest. Um, and it's been talked about by three different people so far. Um. I was wondering if anybody would want to speak to that. Anybody in the audience or?
We, we didn't, the board didn't identify anybody, so. So we have a, we have a curfew at ten thirty to wrap up our meeting. We have, we have other business in the meetings, though to complete also. So I can't give you a half an hour. I can give you five minutes. How's that?
Like, I can't do it in five minutes. But you know, so, Mr. Chairman, how do you write us against our friends, Chairman?
Because you can't extend the public hearing if the commission feels that there is valuable information that still needed.
Mr. Chairman, can, don't we have the prerogative to extend the meeting? You're talking about, excuse me, you're talking about waiving the rule that you stop at ten thirty or to midnight or whatever it's going to take.
No, no, I think that we can extend the public hearing beyond the thirty-five days. All right, so we have two different, we have two different issues raised. One is we can extend the meeting tonight past ten thirty if there is a unanimous vote of the commission. That's correct. The thirty-five days to close the public hearing can be extended if the applicant desires us to do that.
We're, we're only supposed to meet with the chairman, okay?
Then, um, at this point, can we take a, a five minute recess? Yeah, we have to wait for Dave to kind of have a motion for a five minute recess.
I'll make a motion for a five minute recess.
There are seconds? All those in favor, I'm thinking five minute recess. You had some comments you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Carl Leonina, representing the applicants. I had a fairly short presentation, thank you. That I was going to make, but after hearing the comments that have been made, you see they have lengthened it a little bit. I don't intend to respond to every comment. But I think there are a number of them that are worth responding to. So, let me start by saying, following, saying the obvious, but you know, it's my job to produce a record in case anything come to this further down the road. So, most of this stuff will be for that reason. So let's start off about what a special permit is, and we don't know. A special permit is a use that is expressly permitted in the zone, expressly permitted, subject to those standards that you've placed in the regulations and related to conditions of public health, safety, welfare, convenience, and property values. Now, one thing I'd like to say is special permits are always, in every single case, consistent with the comprehensive plan. We'll talk about that in a second. The comprehensive plan is your regulations and your zoning law, not the P O C D. But by the nature of the fact that they've been written into the regulations, makes them consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, if you look at your regulations. Because there's been a lot of talk about the I'm sorry, Jake, can I have a look back? There's been a lot of talk about whether this meets the P O C D or not, and I enjoyed the conversation that, that I've been coming here for more than a few years, I'll call Frank. That, that Frank started about the football analogy and so on and so forth. The P O C D, in fact, is correct, is a guiding document. And you implement its wish list, so to speak, which concerns the issue that are raised, and it means P O C D, by implementing them and changing the regulations. That's the playbook. The P O C D is not the playbook, the regulations are the playbook, and that was, this is what guides you. The regulations when you have an application for a site-specific use. If we were to do a zone change for a text amendment, the P O C D would very much come into play. But not here, except that your regulations. And I wanna read them verbatim so I don't mix them up. Special permit findings, seven oh one one. The proposed use is in general accordance with the P O C D. That's what it says. Let me say you must, alright, you're guided by, you must follow the P O C D. Your charge is to find whether or not we've established that we are in general accordance with the P O C D. I don't have to go through the P O C. I think Attorney Loom and others point out that the sections in the beginning of the P O C D, the sections one and two, that we just disagree on whether or meeting the goals of the P O C D. Even though this property is owned by the historic society, this use is allowed because we are a farm. We wouldn't, any farmer who owns a farm can have this use if it meets the regulations and convinces you that they're entitled to. So, the talk about historic preservation is not part of the discussion. The fact that we are a farm gives us the right to make this application. So, I think you should concentrate on that, and I'll go through the rest of, and again, if you look at right at the beginning of the regulations, section one oh one. These regulations are adopted for the purpose of, and it's a laundry list. And one of those is protecting agricultural uses within the town of East Windsor. I don't know where the idea came from that we're destroying agricultural land. It's been made very clearly with photographs and such, that nothing that we're proposing is going to be built on any land that's currently in agricultural use. It's a fiction to say otherwise. So, there are two components to any special permit. One of the technical things, right, I'll talk about those in a second, and another of the subjective things. Right, the difference between a special permit and a site plan is that if I meet all the technical requirements of a site plan, you must give me a permit. The special permit, you have discretion. And you're allowed to exercise that discretion, and I would never challenge you as to what your discretion is or how you exercise. That's entirely up to you. Okay? We may disagree, I may disagree with your decision, but, but you know, you're in harmony here. You make that decision, and you use your discretion to make that decision. But, what I've heard from the community tonight, and I'm not making any pranks here, but that's okay, I'm doing my job. Some of it has been very constructive. And one of the reasons plans get changed over time is because there are constructive ideas put forth by residents. So, yes, the plan's been changed over time. It's still the basic plan, the use hasn't changed, things have been moved around or what have you. Alright, and some of that in reaction to comments made by the public. It's very, you know, constructed buildings are very good. But some of the things I've heard tonight, and unfortunately, some of them, my, my friend and colleague standing or sitting to my left have been misstatements, hat-truths, and other kinds of false statements, unfortunately. Why do you don't do this? And, and some of you, I know Frank has known me a long time. Okay? When someone challenges someone credit, I can disagree, right? The reason there of one lawyer town, the lawyer will never survive. But a two-lawyer town, they'll both thrive, because there's disagreements, and those are reasonable. But in my, the way I practice, I would never challenge somebody's credibility without understanding the facts that underlie the statements that were made. This gentleman challenged the credibility of John Burnham because he wasn't here. Mr. Burnham is having knee surgery tomorrow, he's getting his knee replaced. So, that's not something he should have known, but to make a statement like that without knowing the facts, I, I think is inappropriate. And I'll leave it at that. Alright, so the law says the law says that if you believe there are any adverse impacts by our proposal, the first thing we must do is decide whether there are any conditions that you could place upon it to ameliorate those impacts. If you find that you can't, and there are no reasonable conditions you can impose upon us, then you can deny it. But you have to first go through that exercise. Are there conditions that can be placed upon this activity? Alright, to lessen the impact of something that you believe would adversely impact the neighborhood or the town in general. So I hope that you do that when you go to delivering. And if you, you know, this is the town attorney talking, I guess. Yeah, I've represented well over a dozen communities over the last thirty-five years. And, you know, I, I tell the communities that I represent, the zoning commissions I represent, when you've got a controversial application, especially, and you're exercising your discretion, which you can, let the applicant, if you wanna deny it, that's fine, you're using your discretion. Let the applicant know the problems that you believe there are in his application, and maybe they can be corrected, maybe they can't. So I'm asking you to do that when you're delivering. So, we talked about property values. You know, if it's an impossible standard to me, I'm not sure how we can ever meet it. But I can tell you, it's been a standard for as long as there have been special permits, that we must establish by evidence that we're not gonna impact or adversely impact property values. Every special permit you've ever approved, and there have been hundreds of them over the years, has had that standard. So you must have found, at least implicitly over the years, that certain activities are not going to impact, adversely impact property values. And I think there is some evidence on the record that you could use to make that finding here. Again, that's one of those subjective things, so I leave that to you. But what is it that would impact the property values here? It's not just the existing, existence of a building, the building's got to do that. Nothing's gonna be built larger than that. There's something there. Alright, yeah, there's been no evidence that the existence of the building is gonna impact property values. So it must be the activity. And what are the things that happen or occur around this activity that might have an impact? So we've talked about noise. Right, that's a big one, I understand. We've done everything we can to ensure that we meet all applicable standards with respect to noise. We've told you we're gonna do that. You can impose that on us as, as part of your Google, should you decide to do that. We will take measurements, and so on and so forth. There is going to be no outside music. The music is going to be indoors, and I forgot, I don't know the architect's name, gentleman. John?
John.
Yeah. So, those things that he called mitigation measures, that he believes show how we're not in harmony with the area, I call complying with the regulations. Because every special use permit application has standards that you are required to meet. And that's what we're doing here. If it takes a hundred, I don't know the word. S T C. If it takes a hundred S T C walls to do it, that's what we have to do. Okay? So, noise, we're gonna meet that standard. We have to meet that standard. Lights, the lights are proposed for full cutoff. Just, look, when I look out my window, I can see stars, I see lights from the stars. That doesn't mean that they're millions of miles away, it doesn't mean that they don't comply with code or something. Just because I can see a light, doesn't mean it's spilling out over to your property. That's the standard. What is the photometric planet? What are, how are these lights going to spill onto adjoining properties? So I think we've met that standard. Which leads me to my next comment. The law is very clear on the somewhat technical requirements. Things like traffic, drainage, level of service at an intersection, those are technically complex items. And the law says that if you have uncontroverted evidence from an expert on any of those issues, you must, must give credence to that opinion. Now, if you had two experts testifying, and they disagreed, you get to pick and choose from who you believe. Here, we don't. As Attorney Needleman said, they didn't have the money to hire experts. They didn't bring any experts. So, in terms of traffic, okay, and drainage, those are expert opinions that have been given to you, and you must give them credence because they've been uncontroversial. But, in terms of drainage, it's very rare. So, the town engineer, that's his job. He went through the drainage calculations, he went through all of this material. He's giving you an opinion that he thinks it's fine, meets all applicable codes, but you've got two engineers saying the drainage is fine. Let's talk about, I guess, the red herring, I'll call it. Which is is there a drainage easement across Mr. Schultz's property, or isn't there, isn't there? And I call it a red herring, because that's not in your wheelhouse. The law is very clear, that's a title question. You don't decide questions of title. I can tell you right now that I one hundred percent believe it would defend a case brought by Mr. Schultz against the developers or the owners there, claiming that there is no drainage easement. There is a drainage easement across his property. Alright, and you weren't given the full details on that. Because the map that you have, that was shown to you by Mr. Needleman, is referred to with his deed, his deeds as, and subject to those matters as shown on that map or plan. And that map or plan showed the drainage easement. So when Mr. Schultz bought his property, he took title subject to that drainage easement. But, again, I, I say that just as, in a totally, it doesn't matter. If you approve this project, and he brings us to court challenging our right to drain water there, that's out the scope, that's outside the scope of your jurisdiction. It doesn't matter. Alright? So that's why I call that a red hair. Let's talk about the traffic again for a second. The standard has always been not, are you gonna generate more cars? Yes. This is the destination. Probably people who wouldn't normally be driving on this road are gonna come and drive on, on this road. Some of them, maybe even from out of town. That's not the standard, though. More cars is not the standard. The standard is, is this going to cause congestion? And you measure that by determining the level of service prior to using, you know, accepted engineering principles. What was the level of service going to be based upon statistical analysis, again, expert testimony? Is it gonna change the level of service? And we've heard from Mr. Haskett, that the level of service at all these intersections is not going to change, gonna remain the same. That's the expert opinion. So we are not going to cause congestion. Are there gonna be more cars? Yeah, there are gonna be more cars. One of the things we didn't talk about, about in property value. It's been my experience as a town attorney, because I've been asked to write blight ordinancees for many communities. But the biggest impact that can affect your property values is having a neighbor or somebody in your area whose property is run down. No one's gonna buy your house then. Alright, and that's why we have blight ordinancees. So somewhere along the line, this commission felt it was appropriate to add this expressly permitted use into the regulations as an accessory use to farming activity. And I'm sure you did that after careful study to determine that this was a way to promote and to keep farms from selling out to developers, keep farmers farming. You could have at that time proposed all kinds of caveats. For instance, I just drafted a, a big with regulation in, in a town, and that's one of the uses, by the way, we could have here on, with a special permit. And what we discussed along the way was whether we should limit them to have, you must have frontage on the state road. Or you must, with a venue, must be three hundred feet back from the road. We could have placed all those kinds of conditions and criteria in the body of this, of your regulations itself. You chose not to do that. So we are left with just the same considerations that every special use permit must comply with. Alright, and I know that Attorney Needleman spoke to you about them. Obviously, my take on them is a little different, alright? I think we do, we are in general accord with the plan of conservation and development, because the idea is to preserve farm. We haven't destroyed a single square inch of farmland, we don't intend to. Then we've got the harmony with the area. And there's, Attorney Needleman read some of these, okay? And, and you can look at them for yourself. The one caveat I have for you tonight, and I'm not sure if you're aware of it, there was a new statute passed last year. You can no longer regulate with respect to character. That's been taken out of your jurisdiction. So, when you tell me I must be in harmony with the character of the area, I don't, whatever, you know, I think I am, and I think we've established that. But the law now says you must change your regulation, and you can no longer regulate any items with respect to character. So take that information for what it's worth. and you can no longer regulate any items with respect to character. So take that information for what it's worth. Why, let me, let me, let me go back. You can, but you must set forth in the regulations the specific things in that area that create that character. You haven't done that. Maybe you won't sometime. They're hard to pinpoint. But, you know, there are areas that have a special feel. I suppose you could say, I know the architectural design creates character. Or the size of the lots create character, whatever. But you haven't gone through that exercise. So I would ask you, if you have any questions, contact your town attorney and ask them uh, how you should deal with that issue when it comes to running through the special permit filing. Adequate access. We have a traffic engineer says there's adequate access. Somebody said that this was the most dangerous intersection in town. I don't know if that's because they didn't know that it wasn't with their. So, you know, again, I I I think when you're gonna make statements, you shouldn't embellish them. You should just, uh, leave them the way they are. The infrastructure, well, there's adequate infrastructure there. There's no one that's given you any substantial evidence to conclude otherwise. Compatible design elements. It's a barn now. It's gonna be a barn. Uh, I think, I'm sorry, is it John? Yeah, I said that? John. He said, well, it's not an architectural building to be, or not a historical building to be given. Probably isn't. If it's only forty or fifty years old, but again, we're not talking about historical features. We're talking about agricultural features. All right, in the picture that I saw, the elevation that you saw, I don't know, we can disagree. It's a pretty good looking building from my perspective. You can agree or disagree, but the standard consideration.
Attorney Wade Alina, at this point, I need to pause. We need to take a vote if we want to extend the meeting past our bylaws.
Okay, yeah.
So, uh, somebody wanna offer a motion to extend the meeting past the ten thirty curfew?
I'll make a motion because we don't have the ability to continue this to another date. And we need to be able to close the public hearing that we extend our regular meeting tonight. Past the ten thirty P M rule. But we not take action or vote or do make a decision on this. This is just to, for the public here.
There's a motion to extend our meeting past the ten thirty curfew. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, we will continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I gotta hand out. I'm not gonna go too much. I was originally gonna do that, but you save at least a couple of minutes. But the rule of evidence here is what's called substantial evidence. And there's a recent case called McLaughlin versus the planning zoning commissioner of the town of Dethel. It's a case about a crematory. And, um, part of the, uh, analysis, which is a Supreme Court case written by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. Part of the analysis was comments made during the public hearing by nearby residents having to do with their views on whether or not this was going to have adverse impacts on the neighborhood. And the Chief Justice went to great lengths, I think, the state, and I just pulled passages from it. You don't have to read the entire case. That talk about, um, what is substantial evidence and what isn't? So you can read those passages if you want the entire case. I'm sure staff can get it for you. So some of what you heard cannot be substantial evidence. There's no question from both sides, possibly, but some of it's not. So take that for what it's worth. There was a comment about purbius versus impurbius surfacing. Jake had attested this, and if he's, if I'm saying anything or understating anything, they'll jump off and tell me I'm wrong. They were testing pits dug on this property. They dug around this place. They didn't, Jake knows what's under the ground here. It's clay. So whether there's pavement on top or gravel on top, it's still gonna require essentially the same type of drainage system. That's just, that's just the way it is. So. The sessions about open space in your P O T B, uh, I think those are related to the town acquiring all these things. So I I think that's the goal there for you guys. Either by setting aside open space in in subdivisions, which you're allowed to do under the subdivision regulations in statute, or using funds that you have in an open trades fund or or bonding, sometimes with bonding to keep open space. You know, given that you've got so much agricultural land here, you've got a fair amount of open space, a lot more than than, uh, most people do. There are some questions about, you know, who's his third party? It doesn't matter who the third party is. And if we were borrowing money from Bank of America, would that matter? It doesn't matter. It's irrelevant. And someone might give you too many dollars and just put it in the cup. So in closing, Mr. Chairman, I believe that there is substantial evidence on the record that we meet all of the required criteria of a special use permit set forth in section seven of your regulations. We've provided you the information that's available. Um, obviously, we can agree to disagree because you have certain some discretion here. And that's the, that's the tough part. That's why special permits are not site plans. Give you that discretion, we need to determine whether we've met them. I believe we have. And I think that this would be a great addition to this community. Um, one of the things that you cited, I think might be the last thing in that, that few pages of case notes that I gave you. It talks about what is and what is not substantial evidence. There's, there's something there that talks about that your job, part of your job is to do what's best for the entire community. That's, that's the way you view these things. Now, there are, you know, some requirements in the regulations about impacts the neighborhood and I, you know, I agree there. But when you look at what is substantial evidence and what isn't, I think you have to keep in the back of your mind that this is, uh, your, your charge is to uh, not do necessarily popular, because people clap. You know, I mean, Frank, uh, you're old enough to know, and you probably were here. Remember when we did the cinema, the Cinema City, uh, project?
Yes, I know.
The Roman was ten high bigger than the nuts.
I hear, I hear a lot of, not in my backyard.
We all do. And and you know, some of it might be relevant and some of it's not, but that's your job to distinguish between the two. So with that, uh, we would ask you to close the public hearing. And, um, we will, unless you have any questions, we'll await a decision at some point in the future.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions from the board? No, good. And I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifth, one fifty inch of road, a special use permit for event post.
The motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second in my day. Any discussions?
Can I just?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just start. Pause it while I. I have some emails that I just wanna make sure get on the record that were received. I have one that was received on January fifth from Eric Caroline Mazarella, seventy-one Prime Street. I have another that was received also on the fifth of January. And this one is from John Deliso. Another received January sixth from Lori Valente. One that was received today from Rachel Stafford. One received January ninth from Lynn Stanley. And one that was received in Murray nine from Gina Camp Lucy. Then I have one that just handled it. They're over here today. Hearing. From, uh, Kuma Shaw. This is the only one that's not posted at this time. I will get that posted.
Any other discussions? Any hearing number? Call for all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, the public hearing is closed. So we will vote on this at a future meeting. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Uh, we did have an application, but they've requested that we postpone this hearing until our next week, which will be January twenty-four. We have nothing under old business and a new business. Any correspondence?
Um, I have come down to focus the American Bar Association. Registration. I heard back everybody, and I think everybody registered and get the, come sit at the office, is that's all right? And you have a packet with there a draft of the affordable housing plan.
It's buried in there.
It's buried mine too. Thanks. It's like, you know, we're in production on the plan.
I thought we had four already.
Right, so there's that. And then Danielle has together. Yeah. CEO report.
That's some of the.
Yeah, this is. So I'm gonna give you enough baby. Yeah, I had a lot of things that I can't move somewhere. Yes. I think it's been good. This last set of tweets, the last word of collection meetings.
I say, I say every meeting, the card and fiber are horrible, and they're getting worse and worse and worse and worse.
Danielle and I need to throw out there. Somebody to write and jot down, make the notes.
They're getting more hard, and they're getting closer and closer and closer.
How far are we from an ordinance?
The Board of Selecting did some more speaking, um, at their last meeting. And, uh, we have a draft that's gonna go to public hearing. At the discretion of the Board of Selectmen.
That's what we need.
Yes, yes. Once we, uh, get a version. I mean, the discussions with the town attorney is, uh, the process is really run by statute, and it really is how we are going to define what blight is. That is up for discussion.
Yeah. Yes.
So, um, something, something I wanted to share with you, um, walking sand and gravel. Right? We've had some, some calls coming in because there's increased traffic over there. It's under new ownership now. Is it Pierce Construction? What a fabulous operation. Danielle and I went out, got a brand new, you know, we got a cash bond for improvement bond that day when I went there. Um, all their equipment is, um, on G P S. So basically, they pull a lever and it knows where to dig and how to dig. They're measuring everything they're taking out of there. People call, um, with complaints and they can run a report. They know every truck, they know every registration if there's complaint about something, you know, like our experience so far has been, oh, well, he's already been pulled off the road because he doesn't have a tarp, you know, like, so I really glad to see it. It's looks so different.
What's the company's name?
It's called Pierce.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty big. You see their trucks around.
And, um, they are using like ninety percent of what they're digging on their construction sites. So.
They know exactly where the trucks are going.
They know where they're going. They know exactly how much. They know when to stop digging because everything's all G P S located.
Really refreshing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Someone else.
Looks so different. I'm not gonna say, you know, it didn't look terrible to me when I went out before, but it looks completely different. They've improved all the drainage that, you know, like they've just made a lot of improvements out there.
So with the transferred ownership, the permit transfers automatically?
Yep, what we had to take care of was the bond. So we, yeah. That's what we did. We called them and said, hello.
You don't have to update anything. Conditions, anything like that.
They have it all. Uh, you know, I didn't put their name on it.
From the win.
It does run with the, they have it in hand. We talked through things that we expected, like the quarterly reports coming in and, um.
See how they do.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's increased activity because it was getting sleepy over there. So the calls were coming in because there's trucks. You know, they get used to it being slow.
They can verify trips per day very easily.
Easily.
Yeah, but it's huge by the gravel like that.
Yeah. So, um, things that are on this list that are new. Uh, one twenty-four Newberry. Um, we've been working with Code of Construction. There's a lot of material out on that site that shouldn't be. Um, and he's working with an engineer to put together a site plan, uh, modification.
That's an application that we received.
Yes. Yep, so.
Oh.
Yes. So that, that's one of the big ones. And one thirty-one North Road, they're actually removing cars and, uh, coming in with evidence that they've had, uh, cars taken off site. Um, they may have a deadline of the fifteenth to allow for us to go in and do an inspection and an inventory of what else needs to be removed. I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. So still having really good luck with, um, the friendly, friendly inquiry letters. Now, I, Danielle's off at Kazio this week, and so the N O Vs or not N O Vs, but just inquiry letters that she's sending out, people go. They wanna take care of it. So, yeah. They left some vehicles over here at the Easy Living and that kind of been built. Yeah, so the response has been, I'm glad that the, that. Showing some progress. And I know cars are next. She mapped it out a long time ago.
Uh, no need for an executive session.
No.
All right, well, I wanna thank everyone for, uh, putting in the extra time and getting this resolved this evening. Yeah, you need to drive it up. Well. All right, so, uh, nothing else. Anybody have anything else to add? Then I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any second, maybe. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it's okay, good. Getting adjourned at ten forty-seven.